Counselor Adidi?
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kazmersky here. And since we were meeting, the whole council is here. All right, if you are able and willing, would now go ahead and stand for this.
President of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with never-ending justus.
Thank you all for being here. It's been a lot, a lot of people here tonight. This is good. Okay, first off, we are going to look at and approve some city council minutes. The first one we have is August 21st, 2025 city council minutes. I did have a couple, just name edits. Ronnie, I don't know if it matters, but Katie was Kate a couple times. Do we care? Okay. And then, under new business, where, let's see. Where, 6:55 PM, interview discuss and appoint city council applicants. In that narrative, we have Counselor Danny Galton.
Okay. What date was that?
So that was the 21st.
Six fifty five.
Yeah, so six fifty five, new business, interview discuss and appoint. So that was the only thing that I saw for those. Did anybody? Did anyone catch anything different?
Do you want to go?
Someone like to make a motion to approve with the edits?
Make a motion to approve.
Can't hear.
I make a motion that we approve the August 21st municipal minutes with those edits.
Your second?
Oh, second.
Second by Counselor Gerhart. And we'll do roll call vote. Counselor Gerhart? Counselor Cunningham? Hey? Counselor Tysoe?
Yes.
Counselor President Braverman?
Yes.
Counselor Olson?
Yes.
Counselor Adidi?
Yes.
And Mayor Kazmersky, yes. So August 21st city council minutes are approved with edits. Next up, we have the minute for the September 4th special city council meeting. I did not catch anything in there. Did anybody else? Would you like to make a motion to approve?
We approve them from September 4th?
September 4th, special city council.
Special city council meeting.
Your second?
Oh, second.
And roll call vote. Counselor Adidi?
Yes.
Counselor Olson?
Yes.
Counselor President Braverman?
Yes.
Counselor Tysoe?
Yes.
Counselor Cunningham?
Yes.
And Counselor Gerhart? Motion passes. September 4th special city council minutes are approved. And last set of minutes, we have September 4th work session city council minutes. Any questions or edits? If none, can we make a motion to approve?
We approve the work session of September 4th minutes.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote. Counselor Tysoe?
Yes.
Counselor Cunningham?
Upstate.
Counselor Gerhart?
Yes.
Counselor President Braverman?
I'm kind of seeing, I think there are two things in here missing, but I can't remember what it is.
Counselor Olson?
Yes.
Counselor Adidi?
Yes.
And Mayor Kazmersky, yes. September 4th work session city council minutes are approved. All right, moving on to special presentations, we have a charter review committee update. All right, you're welcome.
Davey Council, Mayor, Gretchen Deener, 16585 Southwest Royalty Parkway. I chair the charter review committee. We've been meeting for several months. We missed two minutes, two meetings. One due to council issues and the second, we had a lack of quorum. But we've been working hard. I want to give you just a little history that you're probably aware of. The city charter is the constitution for the city. It is voted on by the people of the city. And all of the ordinances and other rules and regulations derive from the city charter. So it's a very important document. Our charter was created at the time the city was incorporated back in the mid 1960s. Unfortunately, during the 70s and 80s, attempts to raise the tax base were voted down continuously. And then in the 1990s, we had Measure 5 and 47, which froze tax rates permanently. By the 1990s, the city was functionally dis- not solvent. It had two and a half full-time employees. It had three officers, including the chief, who was part-time. The last thing they were thinking about is looking at the charter, unfortunately. It wasn't until a large part of Edgewater, et cetera, was built out, that tax revenues started to come in, which allowed the city to increase its staff and start acting like a real city. It was about 2005 or so that enough building had happened in Edgewater, et cetera, to allow a significant increase in staff and, including police officers. What we've been working on has started with going through in-depth our original charter and seeing what made sense to keep and what made sense to change. We got a copy of the Tiger, new Tiger charter, which has just been completed, and the city of West Lynn, and some items from the city of Beaverton as assistance to our process. We've worked through some of the stuff that's easy to change, and we've had some really difficult issues to change regarding compensation. How could we set up something that would not require compensation, but would allow the city council at some point to allow compensation for officers or councilors or the mayor? We've been working through job titles and how they should be structured, given current law, which is very different than what existed in mid 1960s. We have come up with some tentative language, which we have, Ronnie is referring to, our attorney, Ms. Ryan, for review for corrections. We will receive that at our next meeting in December, and we will go through it to finalize those sections of the charter. I anticipate we're probably going to need three to four more meetings to complete our review. And I will be back in front of you with the draft proposal, which of course will have to go out to the voters, hopefully in November.
Thank you very much for coming and giving us that update. I would like to, we do want to have something to go to the voters next year. So as I understand, the Secretary of State does require that we have that information to them in August. Because of that, I would actually like the council to agree that we move up the timeline and have the recommendations from the charter committee at our January meeting. And that would allow us time to look through the-
Unfortunately, we will not have even finished going through the charter at that point.
You'll have two more meetings. Hopefully, you'll be able to get through just as much as you're able to. And then after that, the council can take it from there, look at the recommendations, and work with Ms. Yee more fully in a work session and potentially Jurassic, to be able to see what you recommended, accept, amend, you know, everything that has been in there. So, yes.
First off, I really wanted to say the charter committee, and you're putting in a lot of time, and Alfred and Ronnie have been trying to get a little bit up to date, not on purpose, but for trying to put in. But here's what, I concur with the mayor. According to Oregon revised statute, the city council should also be putting input into charter committees, guidelines, and some thoughts. There are other things besides the changes of charter and municipal codes of 20- There are some things that I'm hearing the police department is recommending the city council, they're not changing some things. The top of things that the city council should get together and decide on, because we want to see change based on past mistakes. So it's really imperative, if we're not able to give direction now, because we're running out of time, it's really imperative to reach this point, that the city council gets to start to work on this and that. We haven't had any, and I have not heard a lot.
That is-
I know that you are, oh, well, I already know that, so I-
With all due respect, Counselor, the charter review committee is to operate independent of the city council.
And you know what? And that's great. And again, I want to reiterate, we very much appreciate all the time that the volunteer hours that you guys have put into these recommendations. But as Council President said, we do, as council, need to have sufficient time-
But do you need six months?
Potentially. We have seen how long it takes to really dive into all of these, all the things in the charter and municipal code. And it has taken the charter committee several months to look through it as well. What I would hate to see happen is that we are rushed into this. The council does need to have time to look through the recommendations properly. And we're going to have to add in work sessions outside of the council meetings. So it could potentially take us six months to look through.
If you have questions, you could direct, have me participate and direct, give you information about why decisions were made.
Yeah, potentially. So, but at this point, I would like to, I would like council to make a motion to have recommendations at our January meeting. So get as many done as you can in December and January, and then, and that way we can take it from there and-
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that the charter committee with great thanks will give the city council its draft by, what date, Mayor?
A January city council meeting.
I can add motion.
Okay, I can open it up for discussion. Does anybody have anything they would like to add? Um-
Thank you for your work. Really important.
Absolutely.
I think it'd be a great idea-
I'm sorry.
I think it'd be a great idea to have you in those meetings with us, too. We have a lot of history.
Yeah, absolutely. They will be open, for sure.
I don't know that I, that I have received any discussion about what city council's concerns are about the charter. So maybe some of you have, but I certainly haven't.
I've said it out loud, in an open meeting several times. I made a list one time during my report of what I thought needed to go into the charter. Oh, yeah, no, I've been very vocal.
Yes, I know.
I think regardless of that, though, that-
You say the city council, so that means us as a group. Anyway.
I might suggest all of the-
We are in discussion right now on a motion. Give me one second.
If it has to be there by August, I can see that we probably do need it about four months. But do we really need six months? Do we want the charter committee to be able to hand off their work? How do I want to say? That they feel that they have actually completed it? Because there were, there's been two meetings that have had to have been canceled for one reason and another, and, you know, which would mean that they would bring the report to us in March.
Yeah, I-
And that still gives us five months.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussions?
So we have to have it to the Secretary of State by August.
What, end of August, first of August?
I don't know the date. I don't, I'm not sure.
I didn't actually pick up, Mayor, too, and I was wondering, so have there been about 12 charter review committees?
No.
How many total have there been?
Eight.
Eight, okay. That's a lot. I feel, I think that, I believe that the council would like to have some time. And so if big recommendations are coming, that could be, like, spread out over two retreat meetings, even if there are so many.
Yeah.
This staff also has some ideas that are really important for us to listen to. We haven't even had a chance to get them in, but-
If I might interrupt, every one of our meetings has been recorded in total. Any one of you is more than welcome to watch the meetings, so that you can be totally up to speed.
Uh, let's go ahead and go two of up. The motion was to have final recommendations by the charter committee at the January city council meeting. We will start with Counselor Adidi.
Yes.
Counselor Olson?
Yes.
Counselor President Braverman?
Yes.
Counselor Tysoe? Counselor Cunningham?
Yes.
Counselor Gerhart?
Yes.
And Mayor Kazmersky, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business. First item, we have the TFP relook update. Essentially, I just, this is an item that we want to make sure we have on the agenda every month, so that we- Oh, did I just get open forum? Here. Scroll right past it. Let's go ahead and do open forum. That is the next thing on the agenda. Open forum is intended to ensure the community has an opportunity to provide input for items being considered on the agenda or make suggestions for future agendas. At this time, the council will be happy to receive your comments pertaining to items on the agenda, with the exception of public hearings we do not have tonight. Each person's time will be limited to three minutes. Did we have a sign-up sheet? Sign-up sheet. We'll go in order of that. Will you be the first one on the sign-up sheet? Do you remember?
I'd like to hand this to our acting city manager, Lee Sheehan. The issue that you've probably heard about before. And to you, Mayor. And one, so you take it. Okay, so I've been trying to bring to the attention of-
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Ron Nixon. I live in the Highlands neighborhood. I've lived in King City over 20 years. Yeah, that's- That what? I'm sorry.
Is that Dixon, Dixon, right?
Dixon, yes. Selfless Dixon, looking west. So, over a year ago, I talked to the then-city manager, Mike Weston, about this public safety issue that I perceive as a public safety issue. We have 50, we're a 55 and over community, like a lot of communities here in King City. I have seen with my own eyes, older drivers trying to shoot the gap. And I used that same expression the last time I presented this at city council, is that, that people are absolutely terrified to leaving our neighborhood and trying to negotiate what appears to be two lanes, but it's really not two full lanes. And so I asked back then if there was, if someone would, if the city would approve painting the curb from the intersection of 130th Terrace to 131st as a no parking zone. So what's happened is, is that the apartment complex that is adjacent to that area, their overflow traffic present this kind of problem. And when people come into our neighborhood, they're faced with the same issue. I've seen cars absolutely stop right in the middle of the street and allow cars to come through. And then, of course, the school, parents are now starting to cut through our neighborhood, and, which just makes this situation impossible. So I've asked for the no parking sign in the past, and the painted curb. Dave, at one point, painted a yellow area about, I'm guessing about 15 feet, at the approach to the stop sign, which was line of sight for people turning right. But there was nothing there for people turning left. And of course, that didn't solve the problem of that whole area of trying to get through in between the cars. So I really would like, and this is a public safety issue. This is something I've been trying to get done for over a year. Okay, so that, that's issue number one.
You have about 30 seconds.
Okay. I would like the city of King City to adopt the 72-hour RV parking rule. Every community that surrounds King City is at 72 hours. Beaverton, Toowalatin, Tiger, Wilsonville, you name it, they're, they're all at 72 hours that allows private individuals to park their RV in front of their homes for a period not exceeding 72 hours. You're 48.
We were 48 back in the time.
Yeah, and I-
Actually, 72.
Oh.
And I- Yeah, I relooked at it today.
Oh, you told me wrong.
So, yeah.
You did?
Yeah, actually, it's 72.
Oh.
We just need to receive the complaint.
Tell me that he was 48.
I think part of it is-
So you did approve an ordinance to go from 48 to 72?
No, 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 it's-
My hearing is not-
It's 72. And it's 72 that's in the order. Yeah, it's the newer one that we were looking at today that shows, and it could be on this.
Is it on the, is it on the web? Is it on the city?
Uh, the Ronnie's got it, um, that we have that on.
And it's now at 72?
It is at 72. Wonderful, yeah.
That is, that is time for now. Thank you for your public comment. We will look into it further. Thank you very much. I just wanted to comment, I do remember, Chief, I don't know if you, or Max, I do remember this thing, like, maybe a year ago, the painting that Dave did. So maybe we can look and see if that, is that still there or-
The painting that was done at the time was what was recommended by the city engineer.
Yeah, okay.
But I think he-
Is that something we can add to the list to check out?
Yeah.
Cool, thank you.
We already talked about it, Chief, remember, I was talking to you about those mailboxes there on Dixon? We're going to go ahead and move on with public comments. Was there anybody else on this?
All right, we have Bill, Bill Hood?
Counselors, fellow residents, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bill Hood, and my wife and I have lived on Prince, Southwest Prince Albert Street since the fall of 2021. During this time, I have observed a significant increase, not only in the volume of traffic on our street, but also in the average speed of vehicles traveling through. A couple of years ago, the street was repaved and an existing speed bump was removed. Unfortunately, that speed bump has not been replaced. While a new speed indicator sign was installed for eastbound traffic from Southwest Beef Bend Road, and that sign is welcome, it is often ignored because there are no consequences for speeding. Moreover, the sign does nothing to address cut-through traffic from the Tigered and Toowalatin areas, which frequently use King City and Southwest Prince Albert Street in particular as a shortcut to Southwest Beef Bend Road. Vehicles frequently roll through the stop signs on Southwest King George Drive and accelerate past the speed limit as they travel westbound on Southwest Prince Albert Street. We also face a high volume of truck traffic despite posted restrictions. And a school bus regularly travels westbound at high speed on school days. These conditions create unnecessary risk for residents and pedestrians. I respectfully ask the council to consider two changes. One, install one or preferably two speed bumps on Southwest Prince Albert Street. Two, modify the intersection of Southwest Prince Albert Street and Southwest Beef Bend Road to allow only right turns onto Southwest Beef Bend Road, with the exception of bicycle traffic. Together, these measures would slow vehicle speeds, discourage cut-through traffic, and greatly improve the safety and livability of our neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Carol Bellows.
Hi, I'm Carol Bellows. 17364 Southwest 128th Avenue, and unincorporated. I'm here to talk about something that's come up with the planning commission. We had, a couple months ago, a, an application. And the developer was very proud to say he even added more homes than was required. I moved here 30 years ago with a toddler and another baby on the way. I moved from an apartment building, and I was just so excited because I was going to have a home and a yard. And I sat down with the newspaper, and right there was an article, an editorial by Mayor Nicolai, do you remember him, of Tigered. And he said, "Be careful, because kids are going to be outside now, and they're going to be playing on the street." And being from Chicago, I kind of went, whoa, wait a second, kids don't play on streets. But I found out that they do. We have major density coming, okay? And when Edgewater was, I began to feel very, very passionate about this. Nurse Park was Cook Park. I had to get in the car, take my kids over there, three miles, deal with traffic. And so when Edgewater was going up, I was like, oh, I'm going to get pocket parks. I'd heard about pocket parks, you don't be in a mall, and, and neighborhood parks. And the developer promised, oh, he's going to have his big park down here, and then another acre up here. And there's lots and lots of natural area around. Well, of course, we can't use the natural area because it's actually a rug area and setback. And, and the acre park didn't turn out, and neither did any pocket parks whatsoever. I suggest that maybe if the kids had parks to play in, if people had parks to go to, that we wouldn't have as much debate about Fisher Row going through in our transportation system. Because we need streets, because we want to drive our cars, but, and parks are for people. I got real emotional about it, decided to check, I don't get a degree in this, and maybe they'll listen to me. Because I know developers, I found out, being professional, they don't listen to the moms. They just go do what they want to do. Parks are important. Much of my research I did was with kids and what makes kids in cities. And the United Nations Children's, whatever it is, Charter. The standard is a four-year-old should be able to walk down the street alone to visit their friend, a four-year-old. My kids were five before they did that. Parks are important. I also have a degree with- I also have a degree with healthcare gardens. In hospitals-
I have a thirty second.
Okay, in hospitals, they say spend a million dollars and you'll save it, okay? I think we will save a lot of money. Parks reduce crime, kids need exercise, and if people don't have a place that's natural to go to, then we'll lose our natural world, because they won't care. Thank you.
Mike Meyer.
Steve Mayer in council. I'm Mike Meyer. I live in the Kingston Terrace area, and I'm here to advocate for resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty, which is on your agenda tonight. And basically focuses in on two things. The first is parks, and the other is affordable housing. Affordable housing, I'm not sure exactly what all the options are for affordable housing, but I think it's something that the city should look into, as far as what the options are, and maybe some opportunities to, to create some opportunities for that. The second thing that the resolution focuses in on is parks, the Parks Plan. So the Kingston Terrace Master Plan generally outlines what the park plan is, but not that it's specifics for how it's gonna be implemented. The more I dive into it, the more questions I have, and I got a lot of questions about parks. So I think this resolution will give city staff some direction as far as focusing in on the plan for parks right now. We talked about maybe developing a master parks plan, but my understanding is it's very expensive. Sherwood created a master parks plan, I think, in two thousand and six, and then they did an amendment in two thousand and twenty-three, and that amendment was two hundred thousand dollars. So I'm hopeful that we can make some amendments to the Community Development Code that may provide enough guidance for our parks plan without having to go to the step of creating a master parks plan. So as we look at Kingston Terrace, I don't know if you can see this map, but the purple is the areas that already have a development plan, right? So the options for park placement are dwindling as more properties start being developed. So now's the time, I think, I don't think we're in panic mode yet, but we'll be very soon if we don't focus in on where these parks are going. There's tier one through tier three parks, and tier one goes from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and forty-three, and it contains one community park. Community park number two is not mentioned in the tier one, nor is neighborhood parks or pocket parks. So I think that we need to start looking at what the city wants for amenities from its park system, because right now, the plan has been to push our parks toward the margins of the city. So along the river, underneath the power lines, and I think that if our city wants to have active parks, that it needs to be proactive right now, start discussions with property owners, come up with a solid plan, because right now, it's very generalized. I know I'm probably running out of time, but there's no implementation guidance right now. And metro conditions of approval required a minimum of thirty-three hundred homes, and I think our aspirational number is thirty-eight hundred. Thirty-eight hundred is aspirational, thirty-three hundred is a minimum. That's a difference of five hundred homes. I think that we can take developable land and create a park more centralized that has flat land that we're able to put baseball field in, community gardens.
Gardens.
Okay, all right. Anyway, a lot of questions, and I'm hopeful that you will approve this resolution, we can start work on getting this planned. Hold on, thank you.
Thank you. Greg Russell.
My name is Greg Russell, fourteen one hundred, Southwest River Lane in Tigerd. And I also would like to give my support to Mike and Carol concerning the public parks here. Working on this thing with a preliminary plan back in two thousand and eighteen, it called for at least one community park and several neighborhood parks. I have not seen any progress, any designated acreage or locations for these particular parks. And what I'm afraid of is that with all the development with the homes going on here, that parks will be the second handle. And I'd like to see some progress be made on this thing as much as we possibly can. And I know that on the community parks, it used to be three acres per one thousand persons. So that would be at least three, six, nine, twelve, or fifteen acres for the main community park over by the town center. And the neighborhood parks are one and a half acres per one thousand people. So there's a lot of designated acreages that really need to be put aside, not even including what amenities are going to be there. So I'd like to really see some progress be made on this thing, if at all possible, what I can do to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Online, we have Debbie, oh, Ronnie? We've got, do we have an online?
I have one, sorry. Well, run time to leave.
I'm ready for Debbie, if she is on.
I'm gonna pass this week, this month. I'm gonna come back a little better prepared next month, but I agree about the parks. Thanks, guys.
Okay, great. Gretchen, did you wanna?
Yes. Gretchen Bier again, a city resident. I wanted to reiterate the discussion about cut-through traffic. We have significant problem, mostly in the afternoon, of people cutting in on Queen Anne and then racing up Royalty and slamming on their brakes to the stop sign at Queen Mary or running through the stop sign. I think we're gonna really need to think about this issue of cut-through traffic. It's happening on a number of streets, particularly Royalty, because it goes straight up to Beef Bend Road. So again, I support the other gentleman who was speaking on this. It is a serious issue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else like to provide comment before we close it?
My name is Dan Runner. I live on River Lane in Tigerd. I'd just like to point out, you're having these discussions about cut-through traffic and the need for these through streets. I'm sure you're all aware of what the cut-through traffic would be if Fisher Road goes through Edgewater and Riverbees onto Roy Rogers. Big consideration. Thank you.
All right. With that, we will go ahead and close open forum and move on to unfinished business. Now, we will go ahead and take a look at our TSP relook update. Again, this is something that we're gonna move forward every month, so that we can get an update on next steps, where we're at, what we are planning to do.
Mayor and council. So first thing we talked about was a grant. A staffer owner at ODOT who is program manager for the Transportation Growth Management Grant, which was what part of the original TSP.
Speak up.
And he looked at our past TSP and basically said that the date of the fact that it was passed in two thousand and twenty-three makes it extremely unlikely and scoring very low on getting grant funds, just as it's been so soon since it was actually adopted. I also looked at Metro, and it's kind of a similar situation, where they have a twenty-forty planning and development grant, but that's mostly for housing and sustainability and things of that nature. And we were also awarded that, the King City Master Plan was applied with that. So with that being said, grants seem to be relatively unlikely at this time, given the fact that the TSP is so fresh. I did go out to our engineering firm and requested that they ask if they can have the capability to draft the city's request for proposal, and Consort came back and said yes. The scope that I gave them, this is a brief overview, I'll read you the list of, so, this was just what I kind of came up with, based off some of our conversations. So analyze data from TSP and alternative analysis. One problem with that, after I've discussed a little bit further internally, is that the data from the TSP studies are likely outdated and expired, so no longer applicable, which won't likely mean that we need to do our own current-day traffic analysis. Consider options for moving these with collector to avoid the Bankston property. Consider options for Southwest one thirty-seventh connections from King City proper. A beef bend analysis, current housing figures already approved by King City and expected housing figures. Determine feasibility for alternatives to the Bankston property extension. Assist the city staff with any inter-agency coordination, so any TSP amendments, we'll have to talk with Metro, we'll probably meet with Tigerd, Washington County, et cetera. Assist city staff with public outreach, so we'll wanna do at least one open house, as well as at least two public hearings, one at the planning commission and one at the city council. And then, then just the one-man crew, perform the necessary code amendments and TSP amendments to reflect the amendments, to reflect any changes, as well as the KPMI. So the consultants would be, you know, kind of running the show quite a lot. And then, as I mentioned, we'll likely need a traffic analyst, analysis, modeling, they just told. And so I went back and looked at the red lines from the original resolution that was passed last month, and I just noticed the second whereas, where I, kind of, when I drafted it, was pretty specific with what we were asking, and it was redlined to, the city council seeks to evaluate amending the TSP to explore all the possible alternative options. And with that being said, I just wanted to ask the council if the scope that I mentioned is what you guys kind of had in mind, because just that small scope, the city engineering firm mentioned that it'll be anywhere between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars. And if we were to look at evaluating the entire TSP, it could be anywhere between, you know, five hundred thousand to a billion dollars, because it costs one point three million dollars to develop in the first place, and if you're evaluating the entire thing, you're essentially redoing the entire thing.
We're trying to look at all alternatives, which includes avoiding extending Fisher Road. I didn't hear that on your list, I heard-
Uh, but consider options for Southwest one thirty-seventh connections from King City proper.
Is that Fisher Road?
Fisher Road would extend to one thirty-seventh.
I know that, but I didn't hear Fisher Road. Okay.
And so when we, like the last discussion we had, we kind of talked about thirty-five to a hundred thousand. So what additional things are going now into this that kind of bump it up to maybe up to two hundred thousand?
That was just the estimate from the city engineer.
That's a hundred to?
A hundred, maybe a hundred with the scope, yeah.
And do we have to stick with the same engineers when we find a difficult company get into the bid, or no?
We've had the city, the city engineer would be writing the RFP, so the bid would come from a third-party consultant. We've had the same city engineer for thirty-plus years.
Okay, so the proposals that we would get in, it's estimated those are gonna range between one and two hundred.
That's fair.
Would Kittleson be a part of this?
If they wanted to be, they would have to bid.
So Missy, we can talk about, like, the first step would be hiring a land use planning firm? Is that still kind of part of this whole next step?
So the way that Max is, which is good, is the, I think, that your city engineers, the city engineer is just helping put together the RFP, just because they're, you know, transportation, and then go out and grab a land use firm to help first.
If it's a big, big transportation planning firm, then they have a land use division that does that in-house. But I do think the city will need land use planning services too, because Max, like Max said, he's a one-man shop. So this is all just good information to have, because it's, this is really about the scope of work conversation, and it's also a budget conversation, just to kind of, you know, keep in mind.
Are there, is there any way to meet the needs of the city and narrow the scope of work to limit costs?
Yes, I think what would happen is Consort could help the city put out a request for proposals, and some of the proposals in the RFP, Consort could ask for, in addition to meeting the scope of work, alternative proposals for, unless there's scope of work, you know, which would be interesting.
Yeah. Councillor Gerhart, you have a question?
Is that available? Can we copy the, what's your name?
Yeah, I just ordered you all.
That'd be great. I've heard some talk about a two-pronged effort, problems being studying the Bankston Nature Preserve, the other one being studying Fisher two hundred and thirty-seventh, and deleting both of those. Could that all be done at the same time?
The problem with Fisher two hundred and thirty-seventh is that the King City con plan, when Edgewater was built, had requirements for two connections to one thirty-seven put in. So when the developer came in and built Edgewater, Fisher wasn't designated that connection, but Fisher was built as that connection, because the con plan pointed to having two future connections. It says very specifically, in the event that the UGB will expand further west, which it likely will, there has to be connections to Fisher. So it would, you would have to do some sort of con plan amendment, but then that would have to be agreed upon by county and by Metro.
So if we can't do that, we need something, because there's a significant group of people that insists on no connection to one hundred and thirty-seventh.
I mean, it's in the con plan, I just point that.
Yeah, okay.
Right, but not the issue of the con plan and forcing it through. What the public is saying is, we're hearing people talk about traffic impact, Fisher Road, I've talked to the chief about this, and we all agree that this is why we need an updated traffic impact study, because it's not just about, it's not just about Edgewater, one thirty-seventh. It's about all the traffic you're hearing about, cut-through traffic, and right now it's gonna get worse. And so what we're trying to figure out is, is it worth to have this utopia, new development at the cost that old King City is gonna suffer without putting in damage measures? The handle was already broken. So are we gonna make what's already broken worse, and make it unlivable for all of us when people leave? Or do we really wanna put all our options together and make sure it works for all of us, which right now it isn't?
If I could step in, I think what I'm hearing with the scope of work is there, we are requesting alternative, alternatives to the road, the roads to go through. So I think that will all be, if I'm hearing it correctly, that should all be a part of this, all of this information. We will need a new traffic study. There are those things that we're gonna need, and if we're asking the company to, or the firm, to provide us alternatives to these road connections, then we have to see what information they give us, right? Yeah.
If I just may address councillor, and just real quick, and the council in general, I've been advised, cut-through traffic issue is prevalent throughout the entire city. Prince Albert, people, one thirty-first, right by the elementary school. If you are bottlenecking traffic, you get increased traffic, increased speed. I mean, right now, if you ever go by one thirty-first during school, it's an absolute nightmare. So one benefit of connecting to one thirty-seventh is to alleviate traffic where there's cut-through in those other areas in the city. That's just something to consider.
I think it sounds like the scope hits what we have talked about. I think it's good at this point to move forward with having Consort do the, to write up an RFP, and then we will see what proposals come in. And I would really, like Missy had said, adding in, giving us a proposal for our scope of work, but then also maybe an alternative, if there's a lesser scope of work, they feel like would still hit the similar needs.
And any RFP that's written before it's actually- And any RFP that's written before it's actually put out for bid, can come to the council, and you guys will over-.
Great.
And assume we have $100,000 to $200,000 that we could spend?
No.
Not yet, but we will.
Well, UGB, it's your decision, I just want you to have the information. So, we don't have a pocket of money set aside for this, it wasn't such that, obviously. We have yet to determine if we're able to use street funds, street funders? We cannot, okay, well, that answers that question. So since we can't use street funds, we're going to have to, unless we change personnel, that's the other big chunk of money that the city spends, road improvements and personal improvement, largest chunks of money. So, don't take any personnel changes, like delaying hiring or, we would have to fund it out of reserves. Now, can we find $5,000 here, $10,000 there, over the course of the year, will be, maybe we'll get extra revenue? Sure, we can find little pockets here and there that might scrabble up enough, but as one big line item, we would have to dip into the reserves. And I have laid out the reserves in the financial summary that we can talk about, I know the questions.
Great.
And are we getting SDCs now?
Yes, we're starting to come in.
And you folks?
Counselor Cunningham, you had a question also?
I have a question about the traffic study. So you hear the people that live on Royalty Parkway and Prince Albert and King George, we are all impacted by the increase in traffic, and it happens every night between 4:00 and 7:00 p.m., no matter where you live on those three streets. And it's just shocking. And the transportation study that was done a year ago, I think, said that that's going to put 4,000 more cars on my street, which is going to put 4,000 more cars on his street. Will the study, will the traffic study help with this crossover traffic?
That is actually something we can ask them to look at. If it will, if Fisher Road extends to 137, will it alleviate traffic?
Oh, it will not, because that's where they're going right now. They're going, they come across, come across 99 on Durham, across the golf course, beat by my house, and turn on Prince Albert. The same thing happens down at Royalty Parkway. They're bypassing Fisher Road completely until they can get up more to the school or wherever they're going. It's pretty surprising. A few months ago, I gave you that presentation.
Yeah, but also, I think because now B-fend is the only option, so they would, they, there's no reason for them to go all the way to Fisher Road, right?
That's right.
So, I, I think it would be a valuable part of the-
I think if we want to preserve our, it's not just about Edgewater, it's about old KCCA as well. The traffic is going to kill us if we don't do something about it. And that presentation that I gave a few months ago would solve the problem on my street and Phil and Debbie Street, not Gretchen, sorry, but, it's simple things. It was just a $50,000 fix.
My last thing that I would like to really, really try to reiterate to the City Council is that any connections between 137th and Fisher are not going to happen unless you vote on it and approve it. So, let's keep that in mind.
Hey, Max, I had a couple of questions. First, could you elaborate on that point?
King City can just say no to the Fisher Road extension?
Yeah, certainly. So, Counselor Prager, man, holding those. The HOA in Edgewater owns basically, I think, a plot of land in the power line corridor, right at the end of Fisher Road. And so, unless the HOA decides or votes with 80% turnout, which, if you were in an HOA, which I know all of you are, 80% turnout for a vote, it's highly on land. And so, the only way that the city would ever be able to acquire that land, very, very likely, is through eminent domain. And eminent domain is strictly a responsibility of the City Council.
So to clarify, a metro or the state cannot compel King City to build that road?
I don't believe, I don't believe Metro would do that, no, nor would the state.
Okay, so they, in other words, they cannot force the City Council to use eminent domain?
I don't think they have that power, no.
Thanks, and then, pre, the previous council meeting, it was communicated to me that Southern Road, being the one through, I mentioned, conservation, it's actually very doable to omit. Is this contingent on $100,000 to $200,000, or is this separate?
As well, so the, the traffic study and the rest of the studies need to be placed as part of the package to change the TSP, and so you can't just change it, you have to have a factual basis that proves that alternative three, or whichever way that the traffic engineer recommends, is actually feasible. And so, I mean, there is a possibility that they recommend that option two, the Fisher Bankston easement, is still the best option, but that option, like, the most efficient option, I'll put it like that. But option three, or, you know, any of these other alternatives are still feasible. And then the city made the argument that goal five is being satisfied, so we're protecting natural resources through the Bankston easement, that we have a local wetland inventory that indicates that there's significant wetlands on that property. And so, I don't think we did get any pushback from any other agencies if we come at it from that perspective.
So I understand that it is not a separate, it would have to be a package change.
I'm going to clarify.
The whole TSP relook would have to be done, the traffic study would have to be done, and then is it separate, that we can just go ahead and omit the Bankston Conservation Road?
Yeah, I mean, I believe the time right book is the B-E flesh collector, because that's the first one, that's the Fisher Road, right?
So we can't, to be clear, just for my own sake, we can't go back and revisit the decision made by a prior council and just choose one of the other alternates?
I don't believe so, because it's already law.
So if the Fisher Road extension is not done, and King City decides not to complete it, then the whole question of the Bankston Conservation Road or any of the other roads is pretty much moot?
Well, again, as the Columbia Land Trust came months ago, since it's a trust, or it's a conservation easement, that would also have to be through eminent domain. So, Bankston easement with this City Council is not under any imminent threats of being followed, I mean, we don't even have any land inheritance or anything like that. We would also, you know, I don't expect the Bankston property to a developer in that sense.
Another question.
I have a follow-up question. You said you would have to add that to the RFP. Do we have to vote on that?
Well, you'll vote on the RFP, but I think, consider options for moving East West Collector to avoid Bankston property, which is in the RFP, the scope of work, covers that.
It covers, no, I'm sorry, it's the follow-up for the traffic questions. You said we have, you could add that.
Fisher Road.
How do we add the study on Royalty Parkway, King George, Prince Albert, in the original KCCA, and the, and the increase in traffic that we have as part of the study? Does the council have to vote on that, have you add it to your research?
I don't believe so, I can just, we have it actually-
You're writing it down?
I agree with, with counsel member, and that's what I was saying, Max, in my talk, is that the impact of the traffic should include all of KCCA, not just Fisher Road and not just Edgewater.
For the sake of time, we do need to move on to the next item. Counselor Tysoe, I'll let you have your question.
You know, I'm not necessarily asking the question so much as making the petition work. We are all being affected by the developing Tiger developments, and Tuolleton and Sherwood. And so, even if we did absolutely nothing, short of, of making all of King City a gated community, you're not going to stop further, more traffic. I mean, it's an impossibility. So, I think we need to do what we can to mitigate for people, for it to be unattractive, for others to cut through King City. But, you can't stop it entirely. That's just not feasible.
Good question for me. So what I heard you say earlier about getting the money to pay for the TSP relook, so that we're not scrimping pennies, because what I'm hearing the City Council say, and what I heard, is that the TSP relook is probably one of our most pressing items that the City Council wants to see done with its money. So if we had to postpone hiring a city manager, would you recommend us doing that, so we have the money to put to the TSP? From what you're saying, do we have to make a choice against that? I'm not trying to be on the hot seat, but I'm just trying to hear what you said earlier.
That, that would provide some funding, it would solve for all of it. That, I just threw that out there as one example of something that you could do. I'm not actually recommending it, I don't think that would be wise, but it's your decision. But surely you would prefer, if you're going to, if you don't want to use the reserves, you'll have to make some very difficult decisions on where those funds are going to come from.
We need to, I'm going to let-
Need a motion?
I'm going, we don't need a motion. I need, Missy?
Well, I think-
They have directions.
One thing that I'm hearing, that I just wanted to clarify, is the former City Council's choice of alternative two, seems to have been a choice that is unrealistic, it's probably never going to be built, alternative two, which, alternative two, which cuts through the Bankston easement and extends Fisher. But to go back and choose alternative three, which is what the mayor was suggesting, the issue there is that it's likely that not everyone in the city is going to be happy with any choice that the council makes. And so, it's important to buttress whatever decision the council makes with facts and data and documentation, so that it can withstand an appeal solute.
Thank you, great. Let's go ahead and move on to our next agenda item, HR update.
HR update, which I've received, I've gotten two bids. We spoke briefly about the two companies, but, two companies I've heard back from are Lexi Paul, which is based out of Texas, and then HR Answers, which is, they have a local office here in Tiger. This is Lexi Paul's, $12,500, and HR Answers is about half of, of 200,000. And, that's where I'm at with the bids, looking at just the two, and I've heard that. HR Answers is not only just a honey stamp, but they have the ability to, for HR, and they also have the ability to have, trash laws, those sort of things, or the handbook. And so, it would be, that would be the way that I would lead right now, if we have a bank, they have a- Their handbook is basically already been written, and we come through and they make the change of language, and it's a little bit of a fluid, it's together, and like, do whatever we need to do, and then all of a sudden, we just push that out. Like I said, they're, they're coming and trained on that. So, that's the area that I'm leaning to, if you want a third, maybe for that one to come in, we can look at and examine it. The other question that I have, and I thought it was okay, is like, but it being under $10,000 for HR Answers, if that's the way we want to go, and that's something that I just, I have the signing authority, under $10,000, yeah, under $10,000 to be able to do that.
Hold on, I, 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 okay, $6,300 per year?
$6,300 is the total cost on that, and then there-
Just to retain their services?
Yeah, so that's for them to do the-
To do the documents we need?
Policy. And book. There is also, they have another service, the hotline service, where, say they got a complaint against me, they could call the hotline. There's a one-time cost of $500 and some odd dollars, and then there's a return charge of like $130. If you have, they could have a, it's a third-party consultant can come in and do an investigation, you know, based on proposals, and, and be able to do that. That's $230,000, they work hourly from there.
So if we needed them for personnel services like that?
Correct.
We pay them, we would just add $500 onto the $6,300, and then we would pay them monthly $130 for that service?
Yes.
And then on top of that, do we pay an hourly fee?
If they need to do the investigation.
If they came, okay. But people can call in, or email in, or they have some way to-
Correct.
Field those, okay.
Yes.
Okay, did you want, go ahead, have a question?
Yeah, so, so here's my question, Chief, because you are the acting city manager. Don't you think we need to have the HR policies in place before we hire a city manager? Because we are going to have in the city manager, it's in the sample letter for a city manager that we're going to hire, that they adhere to our HR policies, and we don't really have HR policies right now that are really up to date for 2025. Am I correct on that?
Correct, up to date policy.
So how long, excuse me, I do have a question. How long is it going to take for HR Answers to, like, are they able to give it to us right away, or are they not going to have it ready for a few months? What's the timeline?
It appears to me, as I look at it, that they could have it done twice.
Okay. But do you feel that, because, you know, is it something that City Council should be voting on today, and should we be considering that while we're considering hiring a new city manager?
Yeah, if the council's so inclined to, you know, direct me towards HR, if everybody has said I have the ability to just sign that sheet myself.
I do have a question, but go ahead, go first.
I'm just having a hard time hearing the chief and stuff. So, just, I can turn my hearing aids up, I guess, some more. But, so, the one that is $6,300 plus the add-ons, doing a little quick math, makes it $8160, and the other one was $12,000?
Yes, yeah, that's the one where. I'm doing most of the work on having to produce the manual, but probably taking most of the six months to get it done.
Okay, so, which one is the $6,300 one?
HR Answers, and that's the companies here in Tiger.
Okay, well, I like that they're nearby.
Missy, could we add it into our city manager agreement, that it would be adhering to the rules that will be adopted? Sure, okay, so it would include, it's, we wouldn't have to have it done before, it just-
I'm happy to hear the three personnel policies, that was one of my questions.
Mm-hmm, good. Okay, so, yeah, go, go ahead.
I think it would, or comment, I think it would be a good first task for the new city manager to spearhead the HR issue, or the HR manuals, policy manuals. I think that'd be a very good task for them.
So are you, you would recommend that we don't have chief move forward with HR?
Oh, no, no, I agree with chief, no HR Answers, and I think we're a good company to use.
Would somebody like to make a motion to, am I allowed to say that?
I, I want to make a motion for HR, HR Answers to prepare a policy handbook, manual.
Should, should we make it more broad than that, though?
Can I add to that?
To just hire HR?
Yeah.
I'm not very good at these.
No, you're good, I think-
We need to be on the call for when we have any complaints as well, right, Chief? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, we would want to hire HR Answers as pro-ten city manager has, I don't know, how do we want to say this?
I would like to make a motion.
We want it, we want it all included, right? We want the $6,300 for, for them to prepare the documents, we want to be able to provide the hotline service.
Okay, I think, so under $10,000, so I do believe that the chief has-
We don't need to make a motion, just the direction? Okay. Perfect, then consensus is given, we, we direct you.
Yeah.
Well, it wasn't seconded, so we're good. All right, great, let's go ahead and move on to new business. First item there is Resolution R 2025-21, a resolution to adopt hiring standards, criteria, and policy directives for the employment of a city manager. Missy, did you want to explain why we are doing this one?
Yeah, and here also-
Awesome, yes, Steve? Yes, Steve, welcome.
This is a requirement of the abuse on public meetings to, in order to discuss the final candidates. So this is a preliminary estimate that it's probably to take to have these approved in a, in a public meeting where it's open to public comments.
Great.
That's a brief summary.
Are there any questions, or would we like to make a motion to approve and adopt the hiring standards?
What are the hiring standards criteria, the components of these bodies?
They're all in that packet, so it includes the city manager qualifications, and the city manager job description, and then there is a link also to the Oregon, the King City Oregon manager profile that is posted. So if we adopt those as hiring standards, I'm understanding that then we can discuss the candidates against those hiring standards.
And it looks like to me, as I was doing it earlier today, on Exhibit A, the candidates must have a minimum of four years of special management, and then, um, another one, city manager job description.
For six years.
Five years. Requires a minimum of five years of progressively responsible, just a little detail, but-
I think we had talked about that last Monday also, and so we were going with the least restrictive.
So I have a concern, I looked this over, I guess that's where I'm confused. First thing that I feel that is essential job duty for any city manager is to be managed by the city council and to adhere to the change, city charter, and city municipal. We have high positions of that.
If I can interrupt, that is in the city manager profile, it is in there.
It is in there already.
It's in-
It's not in the city manager description.
It is, it says that the city operates under a council manager form of government, and so that is the description given, that they are managed by the city council. And that's that type of government.
Okay, so it's in, it's in his brochure, but it's not in this job description?
But because, because it is in the brochure, these are the, those are the hiring standards that we are adopting.
So why aren't they in the, the job description that's here in Exhibit A?
Page, on the bottom of page thirty-four, it says supervision received, position reports to the city council.
It does say position reports to, it doesn't say managed by.
That-
If you're reporting to somebody, you're managed by somebody.
That's what I'm, I mean, that's what inspired it right there.
Why do I have to, that's more languages that would really adhere to what it says in the actual brochure? I understand that we have the brochure. I have the brochure, and I understand that this is going to be sort of the contractual thing that we're holding that person to. I'd like to see that in here.
Well, counselor, these are not the contracts.
I understand.
I think that's why, complement by city, and it's the existing-
Job description for the existing city manager position that is currently vacant and being filled pro temp by the pro temp city manager. And so typically, when you revise a job description, you go through a little bit more of an HR process than it's, than just sort of drafting it on the fly, is what I would say.
Well, here's the problem, we're just getting through July. If you're, I don't think you've found the other end of litigation on this, I have. And the actual job description is what will come back to haunt us if they say, no, that's not how you described the job. And we're already in a circle, so I'm being very cautious, and I don't see what is the harm to add that in there.
So right now, this resolution is just adopting the standards to allow city council to go into executive session to deliberate. It is stated that we are a city council, what was I saying, serving as-
The brochure is not the job description.
You are, you are correct, but as Missy has stated, this also isn't the contract. This is just allowing us to go into executive session.
You can still be sued on a job description in addition to a contract. I do it every day, so I'm just giving you some employment advice. I think it would be, it would be who of us to add that in there.
Well, counselor, I guess, I guess-
I guess what I would say is that the city has an attorney, and Counselor Braverman is not the city's attorney. So while I do appreciate the advice, I do think that it's not critical at this juncture to change the city manager job description. This is really a discussion about whether the council will be able to go into executive session if it's stupid.
While I think at this point, we can entertain a motion to approve.
I will, I move to, if it's okay.
Yes, please.
I move to approve Resolution R. 2025-21, a resolution to adopt hiring standards, criteria, and policy directives for the employment of a city manager.
That'll second it.
Thanks. Motion to approve Resolution R. 2025-21, a resolution to adopt hiring standards, criteria, and policy directives for the employment of a city manager has been moved and seconded. Let's take a roll call vote. Counselor Ardebe?
Yes.
Counselor Olson?
Yes.
Council President Braverman?
No.
Counselor Tyson?
Yes.
Counselor Cunningham?
Yes.
Counselor Gerhart?
Yes.
And Mayor Kazemirsky, yes. The motion to approve Resolution R. 2025-21, a resolution to adopt hiring standards, criteria, and policy directives for the employment of a city manager is, has passed. All right, let's move on to our next item. Now we will have a city manager recruitment update by Steve from Proffman.
Thank you, may I?
Yes, please.
Hearing counselors and for the greater King City community as well. Pleasure to be here. I'm with the recruitment firm Proffman, who you've hired to run recruitment for your city manager. And, let's see, my name is Steve, Steve Worthington. Since last Monday, when we met, we notified candidates that the council had selected. We notified the five candidates at that time. Wanted to report, one of those candidates, a day or two later withdrew, and so we, as you had prepared for, we moved to the alternate. We notified the alternate, the alternate confirmed their participation, and then yesterday told us that they have taken another position. So the alternate is now off the table, and that leaves us with four candidates for the interview. Still a reasonable number to be able to give you in the community a sense of choice, and you can see some contrast between those candidates. Those remaining four candidates have confirmed, we have been gathering the necessary approvals from most of the candidates. There's just, since there's an internal candidate, we don't do background reference on an internal candidate, and I can just, I think I've mentioned that, but I want to be clear about that. And the other four, or the other three, we are doing reference checks on now, and we have that underway. And things are in place for the interview, looking forward to being able to meet with you here in, well, relatively short order, we're only about ten days away, so, but on time, on schedule at this stage, so if there's some brief questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Yeah, do you have a copy of the schedule for the day that you can share with the council?
I, so far, we haven't produced a detailed schedule, actually, I have one on my desk that just came in today after yesterday's removal, losing one candidate, we had to reschedule things, so, but I can, so I don't have it with me. I may be able to, I don't, would you like to see that tonight? It would take me a few minutes to see if I have access to it on my phone.
Um, I mean, I think it would be helpful for the council to see what the day looks like. Does your updated copy also include one panel versus two?
Yes, right, and we have adjusted that to, now with a single panel, and, so if you wouldn't mind, there's two ways, if you could give me a moment, I can try and find it, or if you'd like me to come back in a few minutes after the next item, we could address it that way, too.
That would be fine, unless others have questions at this point.
Are we closing the department's door at nine?
Sorry, yes.
I believe eight-thirty was the, eight-thirty to-
That, yes, and so we have a little flexibility there, because we now have opened up one less hour in the interview process. Actually, I have it open now, so, right now, as scheduled, we start on-
Would you be able to actually email that to Ronnie, so we can throw it up on the screen?
Uh, yes, it's incomplete, a draft document, so, and I'm missing some information, we're asking for the city to be able to fill in, but with that-
It would be helpful to see what information about the city to fill in, too.
Yeah. So with that in mind, I can forward that to Ronnie. So, hey Ronnie, I think I just sent that hopefully successfully, we'll find out in You might, I might have sent that to a personal email, I don't know which one was attached to your name.
Adam Mayor, what we can talk about?
While we are waiting, I can address the panel and the process for that, so, our charter allows for the mayor to create committees, and appoint and remove members from committees. So to select panelists, I'm gonna create a committee of less than a quorum of counselors to put together, select a panelist for one panel. This panel will be comprised of, hopefully, a mix of community members, we'll have staff represented from HOAs, community members, business owners, we will be reaching out to people to hopefully curate a well-rounded panel. So at this time, I would like to invite Counselor Gerhart and Counselor Cunningham to join me on this committee, if you would so choose. So we'll get together tomorrow, or sometime soon, to begin that process of selecting panelists.
And we're looking at maybe somebody from Gambian.
Yeah, if we could.
Stop lying, but we-
Okay, yeah.
I've talked to the president.
Well, we don't need to do that yet, that's, that's what the committee's gonna do. Okay, it looks like we have our sample schedule.
Right, so there's the, the schedule in front of us.
And Ronnie?
The red represents information that we don't have about, you know, where he would like the location and such. Those details will come, and I know it's just not available at this stage, but you can see the schedule for the day. With an eight-fifteen orientation running until about nine, running until nine, and then candidates starting at nine, and moving on from there. Now, there was some discussion to make the orientation a little shorter, I'm afraid that that's not going to be feasible with the quantity of material that we have, but that does allow for some time for the panelists and the council to review materials as well. Now, let's see, then a lunch break, final interview at twelve forty-five to one forty-five. And to be clear, the, the interview process itself is a forty-five minute interview with the candidate, and then there's a fifteen minute opportunity to have a brief discussion, and also for the panel or the council to have some, a little bit of break time, not much.
And understanding that those brief discussions are still in open, public meeting?
Uh, yes, depending on the nature of, yeah, that's your requirement, yep, here we are. And so, let's see, we have the debrief that will be then in executive deliberation, is that if, and debrief in the afternoon, so.
The interviewer's debrief, that's gonna be from the facilitator, right?
Sorry, what?
The interviewer's debrief, that is from the facilitator?
Yes, the facilitator will be making that debrief with some representatives of the panel in the room as well.
Okay, so let me see, because I had gotten an email from our community saying that we were gonna be holding the interviews and executive sessions, has that, has that not been decided?
It is, whatever the attorney, whatever the city determines.
Okay, so the city council should make that determination?
It is, well, I-
Or have they already made that determination without city council involvement?
So, at this point, we're, we're prepared to deal with that either in executive, which is the most common thing that we've seen, is doing the actual interviews in executive, or in open session, it depends on what your, basically what the laws of the, of the community allow. And I, I turned to the city attorney to get some of that, so.
Yes, Missy, do you want to, I thought we were doing it in open sessions, but we are.
The interviews are in open sessions, so, sorry about that, I think I just missed the ad, the, the city council, I guess-
Deliberation, yeah.
We haven't made a determination?
Well, we did with that resolution, that we just-
When's the resolution of the, of the city? When's the executive session to discuss the candidates? You just cannot make a decision.
Right. Yeah. That probably does not need an official motion, that can be a consensus of the council, if you want to reflect that decision formally, then-
Second.
You could, today, decide today.
So I have a question. So to your point, Missy, if we decide as a council to go to executive session for the deliberation, but we can't make a decision in executive session, then we have to come back to another open meeting another day on the same day?
No, that's, it's the last item on the, three-thirty to four is special council meeting of our action items. So city council deliberation, the idea was for that to be executive session, and then to come back out into special session to make the decision.
So if we have a special session at three-thirty, we have to have open forum, correct?
So it's only longer, the whole day, my understanding is the whole day is a special meeting, and so you would go into executive session from two-thirty to three-thirty, and then you have a lot of executive sessions, and the council would vote on the finalist, the person who is going to get the offer, and at that time, direct the mayor to proceed the contract.
Oh, Missy, correct me if I'm wrong, probably me, or you?
Oh, no, procedures.
Procedures would be, you can do the meeting, starting at eight.
Yep.
Do your interviews and all that, then you would go to a recess, go into executive session, and then you would resume the meeting after the executive session.
Right.
So we, you don't have to close the meeting, but you will have to-
Exactly.
But I do believe Counselor Braverman is right, that we, it says it is a special meeting, we would need to provide-
He was saying, Ronnie, is it?
I understand, but I'm, you're speaking over me, I'm literally saying nothing.
Okay.
So, every meeting that we have does have a requirement of open, so I guess we would need to figure out where we would put that.
Probably.
Okay. So if we did eight-fifteen, so my concern with the schedule is eight-fifteen to nine is orientation for interviewers, but likely the inner, well, candidate for, well, we'll have to go to KCA, maybe KCCA, we're gonna need to determine another spot, but panelists may need to go over there as well.
As long as the notice has all addresses, I know you guys are going to start, so say you're gonna start at eight, you're gonna open up the special session at eight o'clock in the morning, that would give you enough time to walk over to KCCA, or wherever you guys are gonna use building.
Would it be recommended, then, to do open forum at eight AM, and then begin orientation after?
I think, um, legal? I believe that was the way it would work, because you do have to open the special session.
I mean, that's what I was trying to say, is that if we do, we have some options. I was recommending that we open the special meeting at the time that we're gonna actually make a decision, and give people open forum.
I think the whole thing needs, I think the whole, the whole thing would need to be a special meeting.
But the reasoning is because you're gonna have some panels that involve the public, and they may wanna come in and-
But we will have a forum, so we have to have it be a meeting, we're conducting city-
We have to have a meeting.
So it has to start in the morning, because we will have a forum, starting first thing in the morning. So I think, let's let the schedule reflect, maybe eight AM start, and we'll open with open forum.
I had a question, if you could, now that the council and the panel are meeting and interviewing the same day at the same time, what is the role of the panel with that?
Good question. So the panel, the role of the panel is to provide their observations, opinions, if you will, about what the, each candidate brings to, to the table, where those persons' strengths are, and if they may have any concerns about that person. We're not looking for the panel to say, please hire so-and-so, or please don't hire the other person. That's not the role of the panel. The role of the panel is to provide thoughts about what the strengths are for each candidate at the interview, and also if there might be any- and also if there might be any specific concerns they have.
But if we're having people who are not on the city council be part of the panel or be the deliberation executive session, are the people who are not city council members allowed to come to our executive session and help us debrief their feelings about them?
So the details are, the panel members will have a facilitator with them. And the facilitator will come back to you during the debrief, which I believe is- And I, my assumption has been that debrief is in executive. But whatever it is, if it's open or executive, you'll have to tell me. But we'll be back in the debrief, and the facilitator will provide a summary of the notes from the panel discussion. There may be one or two panel members that are invited in that as well, so that they can just be there to kind of, to essentially validate what the facilitator is saying, so. They, if, my understanding is the executive session is, it's dependent upon who's invited into the executive sessions.
I would, my preference would be that then it becomes a council decision. We have provided a panel to give us information, a facilitator that relays that information, and then it's the council's job to go into deliberation and then come out.
So, and I'm not suggesting the panel members are in the deliberative part of the session, but rather during that debrief portion, if you choose to have that as an executive, in an executive.
Is that something you'll need to look into?
No, and also, excuse me, I'm sorry. There was a question I had, too. So it has been some years since the last time that I had a interview process, interview on a city manager position that was an open session. It can be done. I do know that when it was a broadcast situation, it was challenging, and some of the candidates became very concerned about being that public at that time. Can someone at some point advise me if this will be televised? So I can warn the candidates appropriately?
Well, I would recommend all, all, all meetings have to be broadcast.
Yes, that's, so we may have some more candidates drop, but we'll just have to see what happens.
I do understand the concern about the candidates answering questions in open session. So is it something that we should discuss, doing it all in executive session, or can we?
So the, the public may attend the meeting by coming to City Hall. Orders with house bill. Requires governing body to extend reasonable possibility to all meetings accessible remotely through technology means by operating members of general public remotely to meet.
It should be an executive session, because when people have the opportunity to be honest.
But we do have to offer it.
Okay.
So that's one of the reasons why I was suggesting how we decide when we open a meeting is open in a meeting room. And so that's what I was asking the council, our options on council, so that we can avoid some of these concerns.
Didn't we talk last meeting about the need for transparency, especially in the climate that we have in this community at this time? It seems like the people should have the option of leading the candidates.
Could they, could they do that at the panel interview? Because then it wouldn't need to be a meeting, because it's not a quorum of council. So community members could be invited to the panel interviews versus the council interviews. Could that work?
And we need to get that out pretty quickly, I would like.
I thought that's what we were, I guess I'm confused now. I thought that's what we were doing, had a panel interview. Am I wrong with that? I thought that that was, we had a panel interview on December third, that involved more than just-
Fully interviewed.
Hold on, hold on, please, because everything I interrupted, I can't finish what I got. So my thought is this, if we're going to have panel interviews to start, which is what I started this conversation before I kept getting interrupted, and we're going to try to be transparent, because we want to be transparent, then I'm saying that we have an option to do that without it being a meeting. And then when we have finished all of that, then we can start our special meeting. And that's what I was trying to figure out with the schedule. And I thought we should do it that way, have the chance again, please. So we're off the meeting, we're open forum room. We could open a special meeting at the end and have an executive session without those panel members. So maybe they could come and debrief us, and then we could, if the council can deliberate and come to a decision. Does that make better sense to you?
There's a variety of ways to put that together, and I leave it to council to make their choices. So, but I do want to be clear that the panel meeting is running parallel with the council interview as well. So, look, one candidate is here, another candidate is talking to the council. So those things are, if you chose to open up either one of those or neither, you know, within the confines of your charter and the laws of the state, you can move forward with that, so.
So, Missy, would we be able to have the panelist interviews just be open in public and then hold the council interviews as executive sessions? Would that be a recommended way to just protect the candidates, but also give the community the ability to do them?
I did hear a lot about transparency. I mean, truth is, I think this is a file that they, that they promise kind of study. And so they have to evaluate their own risk tolerance. It's not really a principle to create a risk-free environment. So it's really the value of transparency over the value of confidentiality.
Yeah, and if I may, it isn't necessarily the issue of confidentiality. And you're exactly right. At this point, the candidates have every opportunity to have told who they need to tell. We would have had a public reception, everyone invited, the night before. So it isn't so much the confidentiality. It is more about the questions and how they answer their questions. And the problem I had before was it was being televised. If there was a recording, they were asked, how have you dealt with a difficult situation in the past?
Right.
And the issue that came to mind was a termination that this person had made with a police officer. And as he started going into that, he went, wait, I can't, I could tell the council this if it was closed. But it's not closed, and it really put that person off the whole process, so. And I use that just as one way to illustrate it. There's many, many things you might ask in an interview, but the answer is going to be very constrained, because it's in a public setting, so.
My feeling is that if it is in the open, then it's much like what Steve has said, and people are not going to give you their honest, best answers. They're going to give you protected answers. And for the sake of our city, we need to know the most that we can know. And so I think it, I think it should be an executive session. And the open part is the reception the night before. And when we do the deliberations at the end and vote for whom we think is the best candidate, rather than doing this in-and-out windows of-
I agree with that. I think, I really do think it's a happy medium to, in our notice, invite the public to the KCCA or wherever we're going to rent space to be able to listen to the answers from the candidates. But I do agree that we would really like our candidates to be fully candid, and it would be difficult to do that televised.
If we do use KCCA, maybe this will take care of it. There are no cameras over.
Exactly. Well, it would be a meeting, so we wouldn't need to televise. That was my point. It's not a meeting, so we don't need to televise it. For us, if it isn't a meeting, we have to televise it, unless we do executive session. So I feel like we let that be open to the public, because it's not a meeting.
Yep.
And we let this be executive session, where we can get the full, honest, candid-
You also don't have to televise it, you just have to provide a-
Right, but then it still feels, yeah, councillor-
I just have a question about the panel. So you're going to have, let's say you're going to have a single panel, it's going to have five or six people on it.
Yeah.
But the public can come and sit and listen, but not ask questions.
Correct.
Thank you.
It would be similar to a meeting, where you come and observe.
But we're not there.
But the panel, but there will be a facilitator.
Right. So the people that come to watch don't get to talk?
They do not. It will not be open, right, it would not be open forum, because it would not be a meeting.
Perfect.
So let's go ahead, and I think we now have consensus, let's update the schedule, so that we will have the panelists somewhere else that is open in executive session for the council interviews. And then we will do our special session after the executive session.
Are we having a reception the night before?
The night before would be the reception. Yeah, and that would be a much more, yeah.
Exactly, and if I may talk about the reception in just a moment. As soon as you have a location, that's great. But the intent there is the candidates come in, they say a few, a few things about themselves, and then they're open for a conversation with who's ever there. And usually, they'll have three or four or five people around them having a conversation. During the course of the night, we'll have a feedback form, which is really a small card with a brief biographic sketch for each candidate, and a chance for whoever would like to, to provide some feedback that you would see the next day during your deliberations, so.
And along with that, we can have a quorum of council here.
Whatever your rules are, so.
So you talked about potentially having a schedule of times, yeah. So if the reception is, what is it typically, two hours?
Usually it runs about an hour and a half.
An hour and a half, okay. So then we can just kind of divide up some time and say, we get to come now.
I can make a suggestion.
Sure, hold on, councillor Cunningham?
So I'm going to tell you that when we were interviewing all of you for jobs, although you didn't come for it, we were at the senior center, and they have a beautiful facility, and it's lovely. And it would allow the, and they always give food. It was great, it was like dinner. So I would suggest that to, if we get to do, they're the seniors over there, the vote would probably love it.
Right, councillor Braverman?
So if we're not, I mean, my definition of quorum is that we're actually deliberating or making a decision, we're just meeting and greeting people. Why is there a quorum issue? Can someone help me?
It's city business, you know. But-
It goes to your deliberation, you're going to be deliberating on it later on.
But it still is city business. I think we need to be careful.
Correct me if I'm wrong on this. It's the way ODC views it. If you are going to make a deliberation tomorrow, five years, twenty years, thirty years down the road, on something, do that as a possible quorum. And that's from the trainings that I got from ODC, my god.
Yeah, I think we should err on the side of caution and just, and just all, if it's an hour and a half, three of us can be there at any given time. We can come up with a schedule of coming in and out, Max.
Very good question. We'll have to take a look at that. I don't know the distance.
Well, I think the interview portion was only forty-five minutes. And then there was going to be time for like quick chat and then break.
It's all in solid blocks. I mean, there's a, essentially, the panel and the council are going to be three hours in one set of interview, in three, or only three interviews over the course of three hours in one location. So it's transit time to and from that, otherwise.
And I'm not so sure we could do that at the senior center.
You say what?
At the senior center.
But if a candidate left here at nine forty-five, they could drive down to the senior center. For their next, for their next, I apologize.
So the senior center is only for the reception?
Only for the reception, and then KCCA for the panel. Okay, I didn't misunderstand this.
Thank you.
We'll get that figured out. I did have a question. There is a spot on the schedule for a tour, so I think we should kind of nail down what we want that to look like, since it's a Wednesday, yeah, go ahead, a tour. So there's going to be, for each candidate, they'll get like a forty-five minute tour of the city. Since it's a Wednesday and we'll have two officers on at the time, can we spare one to have them drive around to some key spots? Would that work? Okay, we'll figure it out. Awesome, okay. And then Prosser will be able to provide the facilitator for the panel?
Yes, I'm meeting with someone tomorrow to see if they're available.
That was all my questions.
It's just with the company owner today.
Okay, so I understand we're going to have different panels. Are the council members going to be split up into different rooms? Are we all sitting together?
All sitting together, and I'll be your facilitator, so.
So we're one panel, another panel, because of the transition. Will it be a time where we'll be sitting and waiting, or will we always be?
You'll basically always be there, you know, maybe a few minutes when you have a break, hopefully. Yeah, but essentially, just a few minutes between each interview, there'd be a little bit of time. It's entirely up to you, so.
No, I think he included that on the schedule, that we had council, one panel, and a tour, right? Yeah. So it did, we were ending earlier than the original.
I'd recommend somebody, once you update that schedule, give it to everybody.
Will they know where the day before is going to be held? And will there be a schedule about December second and December fourth?
We're waiting to hear, so, yeah, yeah. I assume the administration will make some decisions about location and those details, so.
Yeah, I think we'll get the updated schedule, and then we can start filling in the red lines.
There we are. Thank you.
We'll let the city staff get that situated for us. Alrighty, thank you for listening here, Steve. Our next item on our agenda is our fiscal year 2024 audit presentation. Do we have that tonight? Do we not? My item C says fiscal year 2024. I'm looking online, did I not refresh it? Oh, it is on the printed copy, but maybe I pulled it up earlier than, okay, I apologize. I don't have them on the stack. Okay, um, next item is actually review sample city manager agreement, and we will wait for, Missy, for that one. Missy, you want to take us through the sample agreement?
Actually, compared by one of the city's cocaine attorneys, Assey Driscoll. And this is a, I would say it's a fairly city, I highlighted it to Assey and I. The first one is, this one is the current personnel policies of the city as a state.
Either Assey or I knew whether the city actually does have any, any adopted personnel policies, even if they need to update it. So, like, are they, is there an employee handbook?
I believe we have two versions that are neither like fully complete.
That's an example, Missy, we never came to a resolution on a special one. This is why, I know, I'm a broken record, but I, my recommendation to think about- This is why, I know, I'm a broken record, but I, my recommendation to think about is that we should get those policies polished up, not just the same one revised, because we don't have anything, you know.
So is it, is it accurate to say that, uh, if a, if a contract references personnel policy, that there isn't, is there a way to describe policies that, you know, for example, like, your vacation hour policies?
That would, that would be in the duty agreement. The duty agreement has personnel policies, that makes, and then, and then the, like, whole policy method for the B side also has some stuff, but most of the stuff that we're referring to, to, like, vacation usage, that sort of thing.
And the city manager is part of that?
City manager's not part of it, yeah.
Oh, so, so the city manager has followed the CBA.
I mean, then could we just include that until we have?
Yes, policies, because I do think that it's important to include something that this person is going to agree to abide by.
Yes. So could we include, um, adheres to the CBA, and also personnel policies as amended from time to time? So that way, when we do have personnel policies, then, okay, we would wanna just avoid any, like, contract disputes, right?
Can we discuss this, because I feel that, um, I asked you to talk to Adam Collier, because I'll tell you right now, the city manager is exempt from collective bargaining agreement, the city manager does have to force the CBA with the union for the staff, but the city manager is not bound by the CBA.
Unless it's in their agreement.
Well, it's, the union is gonna have a problem with that, so I just wanna say, check with them. You wanna, you guys do whatever you want, Missy, you wanna do it, go ahead.
Missy is saying that they are not part of the union, they would adhere to the same rules, and that would give us something that they would need to adhere to until we have our personnel policies in place by the HR company, because that will happen after we hire a city manager, so we need to have something that they are adhering to.
It's just temporary.
Correct.
But check with our experts, because I am not the counsel for the city.
This was drafted by Ashley Driscoll.
But she didn't know that we didn't have, she thought we had HR policies and we don't have that, and that's the point.
Well, no, she didn't, this is a question that we discussed, and both of us were pretty sure that there wasn't something called, you know, personnel policies, and we were just speculating about how to solve that. I do think that, um, referring to the collective bargaining agreement, terms and conditions, I'll talk to Ashley about that and see what she thinks, and we will have something in the agreement, in the final agreement that gets submitted, that captures this, all there are the others.
So a group.
So it's gonna say, uh, something like, as defined, the, the personnel policy says, define the CBA agreement, even though you're not a, a union member. Yeah, right, great, as outlined or defined.
We could, we could have this posted as our sample agreement, but our first, our first draft we give to our final candidate could have different language. So adopting this as, yes, it's a good starting point, this is a sample, and then we would refine it before offering it, okay. So we're not bound by this. What other?
Is that?
Yeah. So between now and then, we will have good verbiage that we can have in here that would give us, okay.
I have another question, so, you know, I don't wanna take up too much time, but, and see, I just wanna put this on the record. I feel that we're rushing this process, and we don't have our infrastructure in place, and it concerns me, and I wanted to have it on the record. I know that you guys can disagree, vote your eyes, do whatever you wanna do.
It's not, do you have a question, follow up with us?
I do have a question, what is the harm for us to get our policies in order? Um, it seems like we can get them quickly, and then we could refer, we can review them and refer to them.
I don't know that we're gonna get them in the next.
Well, instead of relying on the CBA, why don't we just say we're in the process of having HR answers to our handbook, and the city manager will be bound to that?
I, I don't, I don't think there's a harm in having something they need to adhere to in the meantime, and Missy will work with, with Ashley to come up with good verbiage between now and then. I think right now, we're just looking at, yes, this is a good sample contract for you to move forward with. Our motion that we're gonna look to potentially bring forward is just to direct the city attorney to draft the city manager agreement. So we're just saying, like, yes, this is a good start, um, let's go ahead and move on to the next, um, highlight. Mm-hmm. I like two, yeah.
And there are, you know, to read this, there are several points along the way, obviously, either party gets terminated at any point, it's an at-will agreement. There's several points along the way where everybody goes a little bit more forward with each other.
And we suggest a probationary period of one year, and have them on probation for one year, so that in case, um, there isn't a majority, that, we had this happen where we didn't have a majority to vote to have this person terminated, um, then they're on probation for one year. And I think a lot of cities are doing that, and I know type of just that, because somebody else performed on, I think, it's not gonna go.
There's a couple of sections.
Six months, somewhat of a six-month probationary period, I wouldn't call it that, but that's essentially what it is, and, um, you put. Something is a little excessive, Ashley and I did talk about this too, but if the council feels that it's important.
It seems as though there is kind of, I mean, there is language in here for the first six months, the first year, and then.
There are some question marks.
Yeah, with, with performance reviews that would give a satisfactory, unsatisfactory, and those would be written, I mean, we would, it would be up to the council to actually follow through with performance reviews, because that gives you the written, um, proof of, you know, cause or, so.
Would the city's council members have a chance to make a decision on this before finalizing the season? I mean, it just needs a little bit more time, we have tonight.
Uh, it would have to be next week, I think.
I, I mean, wouldn't we do that before the first contract anyways? We would, we would have to approve the agreement.
This is essentially the, the, the terms of the agreement, and so for right now, if there's a sense of wanting to start an offer, like, my husband's, we are probably, is, we can start with that.
Well, here's my concern, if you need more time, then, um, you'll just have to take that more time, and you would.
That's a question, isn't the fact that Oregon is at-will state kinda cover that for us anyway? So really, uh, one year is kind of excessive, if, if ten months, we decide that's not a fit.
And I think that, I think the problem we ran into previously is that there were performance reviews never done, so there was no, there were no options. So it is up to council to actually follow through with performance reviews, and grade, and give satisfactory, unsatisfactory, and have written notes, written, you know, everything down, and then you can follow the contract.
Sure, HR company would also agree.
Counselor Cunningham?
I'd like to say that we're hiring a professional with experience, all of the people that we're interviewing have had these kinds of experience. I think a six or a twelve-month probationary period would be something I'd say, no, I'm not interested in. Speak to the fire, yeah.
The mayor and I have been through this, you know, we got burned with our last contract, allegedly, um, and we're getting sued, I'm part of it. So I take the contract very, very, very seriously, I'm surprised the mayor isn't, because.
I would not say that.
Besides the performance reviews, the actual language of this contract really needs to be so clear in favor of the city council being able to get that, get coaching. This one's reviewed more than this one's a year, there are a lot of things.
Every six months.
Okay, I would say every three months, because we need to make sure, just because it's in the contract doesn't mean we have to exercise it, but if it's not in the contract, at-will is not gonna help us, we'll be right back where we started. And what scares me is that the mayor and I and, and Counselor Aditi were voted in, and we've gone through enormous amount of stress in the last January to present, change up the problems that were here before we got here, and it seems like we're going right back into this.
I'm gonna go ahead and stop, I'm gonna stop you right there.
I'm not gonna stop, because I think this is really, this contract is probably the most important thing that we have to.
Counselor Braverman, we're gonna be, I feel as though potentially you haven't read through the whole contract, because the concerns that you are raising, I have read in this contract. Counselor Olson?
I had a quick follow-up on Steve's point on firing at-will. The previous city manager had a clause in there that, uh, we would owe him a year's salary. Is that grandfathered into this contract, or is it, we can fire him at-will?
The severance period will not exceed four months, and that is a base salary.
Four months, why do we have to pay him four months?
That's after two years of service.
Absolutely not.
I'd say that this could be him, but dismiss him if he doesn't work out, and in the first two years, we can.
That's without cause. Again, if we are doing performance reviews and there is cause, we will have written documentation of that, and then this doesn't apply.
No, we aren't.
We are not, because we will be doing performance reviews, and if we are unhappy or unsatisfied with the, the work being done, then it will have written documentation, and then you can terminate for, for cause, and then severance does not apply.
I would just like to say, we are not the previous councils, we're not hiring the previous city manager. Those were incredibly unusual situations, and I think we need to, I, I don't think we need to put so many things into this contract that's gonna cause a good candidate to walk away from us.
I agree with that, we need, we have to balance, just like Missy has said before, we are interviewing them, they are interviewing us, and we are not the previous council, and we, I think that this is a good starting point for the contract.
Well, it's good to get other people's opinions, but my opinion is this, we don't know when it's gonna be the city council. We have a four-year window, but what happens with this contract when neither of us are on here, and we're back to where there may be more confusion?
Then that council would need to make sure that they are doing performance reviews.
The contract is the Bible, and it is the governing document of the year. I think it, all I'm saying is, I don't wanna have an argument tonight, it's eight o'clock, and.
Let's go ahead and move forward to the last, um, point here.
Excuse me, I would like to have a work session where we need to discuss this, maybe in an executive session, maybe with Rachel. Now, we need to compare the old, uh, contract with this one, yes, we don't wanna scare a candidate, but we do need to make sure that this contract is not gonna be a problem with the other one, a challenge.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on from this right now, we have one more point that we need to, um, have Missy address.
Ashley and I have a question about, um, some cities putting a residency requirement. Some of these larger cities, of the council lots, they have a residency requirement, so for the, the person who's. Is, if they don't live here already, they're required to live within the same limits.
I, I know that we didn't have that before, and I, I mean, I don't think it needs to be a requirement, our city's really small, and that would really pigeonhole somebody.
Somebody up in Edgewater would be really happy to sell their house.
Um, okay, at this point, let's go ahead and entertain a motion to have the city attorney draft this, would somebody like to read that?
I'm not sure. Yeah, this is, I did wanna reiterate, this will be a negotiated contract. Possibly absolutely, with the candidate, until this is not, how the final agreement, if I keep going to work.
Yeah, and council would be, would comprise of each part of that, right?
Steve suggests that, which I think is good, is if the council and the mayor. Be authorized to work with the city attorney.
Is that something we would need to motion? Yeah, um, so what, what do, what do you need from us then, to approve, um?
The sample agreement.
Which one, to approve the sample agreement, okay, with, with the notes that we discussed?
So do you want me to say it?
Yep, go ahead.
I move to direct the interim city manager, city attorney, to draft the sample city manager agreement with the provisions that we have discussed during the session.
Draft it or to approve what we have, which one? So, um, read the top one instead.
I move to approve the sample city manager agreement, with the provisions we discussed.
Hey, do I hear a second? Okay, um.
Do we have discussion?
We will open it up for discussion.
So the provision that says the, the city manager has to give us forty-five days' notice, having, we often, we have to give them forty-five days' notice to want them to be, that's how it would all work, but I would, I would circle that, and I would maybe not do that. I think that there should not, because at-will means they can give no notice, we really wanna pure at-will, but forty-five days needs the at-will provision. So what I'm saying is, I would really like us to have a work session before we adopt any, anything, and I think it would be helpful to have my expertise, I know I'm not the attorney for the city, but it is something that I've done for thirty-five years, and it's helpful, I would really like to provide whatever insight I may.
It does say in here, though, that we, um, do we have to get, we would have to give them forty-five days? Yes, that's what it says. I'm asking, Missy.
Contract requires the city manager to report their departure to forty-five days, quite honestly, that is more aspirational, because the at-will employee can walk out the door the next day.
Well, and it says in here that the city council could designate their last day within that forty-five days. So I guess the question is, though, if we were terminating, would we have to give them forty-five days' notice? Okay, so I think that should answer that question. All right, so, um, any further discussion? All right, let's go ahead and go to a vote, Counselor Dearhart.
Yes.
Counselor Cunningham?
Yes.
Counselor Tysoe?
Yes.
Counsel President Braverman?
No.
Counselor Olson?
Yes.
Counselor Aditi?
Yes.
Okay, great. Mayor Kazmersky, yes, uh, motion to approve the sample city manager contract with provisions that forthby the council has been approved. Um, okay, what do we have next? Peter Black down on me, here we go. Um, next we have the fiscal year 2024 audit, yes, not ready. Thanks, next month, next month, okay. Uh, next, financials for September 2025 and October 2025.
Did, uh, add it for the restrictions, because of the questions last month, if you look at the highlights page, you can see the total fund balance, and the contingency, we're in the general fund and the street fund. Look through the financials, you'll find other contingency line items, but those are based on revenue coming in, so you can't really, so.
Yeah, I was unclear on, uh, well, contingency sometimes refers to reserves, but not necessarily all of them.
They, these are funds that the city has, that they have not questioned towards anything else. They're meant to, they're meant to hold, however, they are unstandable, this council can choose to set them. They just are currently not allocated towards any expense in FY 2026.
Yeah, this, uh, I'm absolutely clear on that, contingency funds means reserve funds.
Yes. So we also have some detail around legal fees, that, drawing, um, yeah. In the meantime, while we're pulling that up, if there are other questions.
Um, I would say in the meantime, while we're pulling that up, let's do questions, and then motion to approve, and then move on to the legal.
I have a few quick questions, they'll probably be really easy. Uh, I noticed that grants, court fines, delinquents, and water are all at zero, that's just about four hundred ninety-five thousand. If they remain at zero, is that gonna be a problem on the budget at the end of the year?
So the court fines, delinquents are, um, court fines that we write off, and we don't do that until the end of the year. We try to get them collected throughout the year, it's not something we write up every single month, so.
Listen as a resident.
No, it's a negative, so you can see, there's like little currents, like, yeah, it's, it's a bit odd, I admit.
So that's our anticipated negative?
Right. Right.
And so we're hoping it's less of a negative.
Uh, grants, those are applied for, those grants are applied for and received throughout the year, so those are gonna be by each. And then, um.
Well, I just, you know, we're spending a little bit of money at each council meeting. And if the grants don't come in for three hundred and fifty thousand, are we in fiscal trouble?
So, those grants are gonna be specific spends, so will we be okay on that? We're gonna, you're gonna see a big jump next month because the property taxes will start to make. So, you're gonna see a lot of those, like that property tax line item that's sitting at six percent. You're gonna feel a lot better.
Oh.
You have to pay us.
Water, this is a revenue. I was on the city council previously, I heard a lot of the same questions. Yeah, I would just say if there was a way to put, water is from city of Tiger or maybe a footnote. There's, uh, there'll be some other pedantic councillor who's gonna have to question again.
All right.
Oh, one last one. We don't have any debt service, city doesn't have any debt?
It's paid once a year.
Sure, there you go. Questions, okay.
All right, so the council asked, uh, staff to put together some numbers. Uh, this is what we spent for the last two years for legal services. Um, I tried my best to, uh, to combine everything into, so you guys can see where we spent, uh, the money, where it went and how it was spent. Um, unfortunately, it was a lot of money, so, um, yeah. There is, I, I didn't do a total on there, but it's about a little over three hundred thousand for two years. I'm sorry?
Three seventy.
Three seventy.
Um, yeah, I, thank you so much for putting this together. I think it's something that we, as a council, have been asking for, for a year. Um, it's very helpful to see it laid out and it's extravagant. And this is hopefully one of the areas that as a council, we can, um, a council and the city, just move forward and be more fiscally responsible and just, you know, try not to get sued as much, right? That frees up some money for other things.
Um, so, uh, as staff has mentioned before, we're just gonna do better. Um, just going to, I mean, that's, uh, you know, uh, all we can do. Um, you know, uh, Missy is very, um, aware of us spending money, our hourly rate, and she only calls us when she, when we need to fix something, um, so.
For two years.
For two years. For two years.
Yeah, yeah.
So, this was one of the ones that, I'm sorry.
There's a lot of money we're gonna save, I turn.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, most of you know how I feel about some of the other litigations, but I won't go into details.
So, is there that in order to avoid funding, like, what would be your recommendation?
Just do our due diligence, uh, make sure that, um, we're, uh, talking about the actual law, um, not feelings. Um, you know, uh, being clear and objective in our findings, uh, so that way we can, uh, that's the, that's the biggest one.
How do we keep the public, um, bringing rent and losses?
Uh, I mean, so here's the thing on rent. Uh, if the council, or if the, if the person, and recalls, it doesn't matter. A, cannot like your hair. If they don't like your hair for whatever reason, and I'm just using that as an example, they can recall you. Uh, and that's what the Secretary of State and I and as a legal, Peter Watts, have come to conclusion with. Um, you know, so when it comes to the SOS recall litigation, that could have been avoided.
Cause it looks like a recall, if anybody can try to recall.
So, recall.
Part of our hair is seventeen hundred dollars.
Yeah, so that one, so, I don't know where that one. Cause in the details, uh, on the invoices, it just says recall. I couldn't tell if that was like somebody else's recall or if it was part of somebody else. I couldn't tell which one it was. But, yeah, uh, generally, uh, the recall is no more than, no more than ten thousand dollars. And that's including Washington County elections, it was about four thousand dollars for elections, staff time, stuff like that. Uh, so it's, and then legal review, because we have to have legal review, if that's just the name of the game.
Think if our charter and our new code allows for more either vote of the public, if they weren't happy, even if. Or was a third-party mediation clause before they did a refund.
I don't, I don't know on that one, cause the state is pretty, uh, clear on the recall, um, litigation. Um, it, so the question. Yeah, for recall, before it went to a recall.
If we had a charter, another way of redressing public, whether to go to a vote. In the middle, as I went into the courthouse, I saw twenty thirteen lawsuit brought by Mr. Vandemarke. He really wanted to take the TSP thing to a vote. And Peter Watts and Weston, um, yourself basically denied that, saying no, that that was something only the city council could do. The people couldn't vote on it. And I think that probably led to a lot of recalls that we're talking about today.
Well, I can see an evaluation of that. My concern is that the charter can't be, because of.
But also if we're, I mean, as a council, if we are listening to the community, right? If they kind of say like, I want her to be paid for, I don't think that's the issue. That's not the recall issue, right? It's like, we're not listening. So, as a council, again, we just need to do better and continue on this trajectory of like, really trying to do right by the people. And being transparent. Being transparent and all of that.
And then my, my side is always, like, if you wanted to put it on a ballot, come on in. I, I will help you out, um, but.
I don't think we should alter, we should not make a way to recall. What I'm suggesting is, if the council were, we think it would save us attorney fees and hardship if we put something in the charter where, again, attorney gives power back to the people.
Right, no, I, I.
People of the drive, we call them risk.
Yeah.
Answers, so we can.
Yeah, I understand that and I get it and I agree with you. I just have no idea how to, how to do that. And that's something that maybe Missy and I can talk about later on, um, and maybe brainstorm.
Yeah, mediation can also be costly.
It can be, um, and then that's, I mean, it comes back down to, sorry, you guys listening, is what it comes down to.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, and, and some of you know my, my saying, listen with fascination, meaning you actually listen to people, um, and not just, uh, acting.
Well, I think, you know, a year, a year in the making, but we kept pressing and we got it. And so, you know, I don't think that things should take us a year anymore, cause now we are all working well together and collaboratively. And so, um, yeah, we just keep committing to do better and.
It's the thing I said before, unusual circumstances. We are not that city council.
Right. So, I think, let's go ahead and, um, make a motion to approve the financials so we can keep moving here.
I make a motion, we approve the financials.
September and October?
September and October.
Thanks, let's go ahead and, motion on the floor is to approve the September and October twenty twenty-five financials.
Well, that was one page of it. Are there additional five pages?
There is the summary, the financial summary, and then there's the October financials and.
Yeah, it was all included in the, did you have questions about, did you have more questions?
Uh, I'm more like the street fund, uh, over budget, four hundred thousand, is that a problem?
No, that wasn't a budget.
Well, it's that, and there is no contingency left in the street funds.
The street fund is reallocated every year. Are carried over, but the city council authorized an additional hundred thousand dollars worth after we are.
Yeah, yeah.
We're half the budget. Carrying over next year.
Okay, did the street fund then only be allocated to other street improvements?
Use the street fund for planning, right?
Okay, and then, uh, taxes, I assume that's property tax, or are there other taxes?
That's a portion, yes.
It's property tax. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped, uh.
Right, I know.
Rating of, uh, local options, eleven thousand.
Oh, local options, lucky.
Tax, four hundred sixty-two, I, I assume that's property tax?
The property tax is counted, uh, all the funds, almost all the funds. Only the general fund and. Okay, sorry.
Isn't that the one that Eastside is gonna go from point six percent up next month?
On the general fund, yes.
Oh, okay.
That's gonna go up and then we allocate.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, and then I guess one last one was, uh, the transportation, uh, system development charges. The contingency, which is the reserve, is seven hundred thousand. Could that then be used to purchase our property?
No, because, well, if, if we get in this two million, then there might be reserves, right? Because we, we do a zero budget, so we assume all the revenue comes in and then we put it all out. So, there is, if two point two million comes in, which we haven't gotten yet, then there would be seven hundred thousand unallocated. However, there are restrictions on that.
And the parks, uh, these are the parks, are the funds that you purchase. Transportation SBTs are funded to, like, major street overhaul expansions.
Okay, I simply had a part, I'm gonna. So, there's. Okay, sorry, I'm probably unclear on this, so explain it to me. Uh, the reserves in the parks are one point three million.
And then on two point eight six million coming in into revenues for. Which we've only gotten, well, we started with the beginning balance and then we got about sixty thousand here to date.
But those funds, if there are any contingency, those could be used to purchase park property?
Uh, yeah, in my staff report, I have mention of the park SBTs, I don't have mention of the park project, but.
Okay, thanks.
Any further discussions? Thanks, motion ordered to approve September and October twenty twenty-five financials. Councillor Gerhart.
Yes.
Councillor Cunningham.
Yes.
Councillor Tysoe.
Yes.
Councillor President Braverman.
Yes.
Uh, Councillor Olson.
Yes.
Councillor Adidi.
Yes.
And Mayor Kazmersky, yes. Motion passes. Um, moving on, Casell Connect online, Katie.
I will make this quick, I'm sure it makes you funny, I don't know. But the short version is, we upgraded to sell based on our going to the summit. We got kind of priority order to get upgraded. It is so much faster and it's so much easier to work in now. We also have access to this online portal. So, after Thanksgiving, you will all get logged in where you can see, so you can see.
I'm seeing right here.
Um, if you know, if you have the financials still in front of you, you'll notice the, uh, general fund beginning balance, three, four, oh, six, oh, two, two, nine, seven. That's exactly what you see. So, everything in blue on this screen, we'll do the training, there's a lot more involved here. But you can click into anything that's blue and see the detail that makes it up. We'll be able to see invoice copies, but you'll know who the vendor is, the check that was paid with, a short description. So, you're gonna have a lot more information coming.
More than you might even want.
All these attorney fees, then we can track without, you can't see them.
You'll see by attorney, so, in fact, that one, I don't even write it down here. Um, we spent about fifty-eight thousand here to date, so you can't see the green, and that's probably really small for you. Click on this, this fifty-eight thousand two twenty-eight, you see by vendor, exactly who it is. Click on anything that's blue, clickable, you can see, oh, it's invoice two, three, seven, eight, eleven, well, just as general services apply.
Cause it's not going to give us the, the detail on the bill, right?
Right. We are not putting that back in the bill. It's not privileged.
Attorney's probably privileged.
Right.
The bill.
Thank you.
We could see just your name, we paid you fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Not me, not just me. Above the lawyers.
Yeah.
Is, uh, Jordan Ramus still doing legal work for us, Katie? Are they actively incurring debt?
Basically, we have, we have three attorneys, uh, as I know, um, still under review here.
Yeah.
Uh, Missy, Ashley, and Jordan Ramus.
And I'm doing, I would say, most of the work, but I did have to, um, I had a conflict, uh, on a matter that had to.
And so, I actually had to work with, um, I think it's Jordan Ramus.
Yeah, uh, Jordan Ramus, uh, works mostly with land use.
Yeah.
Have fewer calls, uh, Petra and Tedra, they were here when we were playing with, between Centix and Square and their attorney.
Yeah.
That's for a lot of those. Associated land use agreements and help the city navigate laws, especially if the developer is coming in with their own attorney. We can be sure that we are also represented.
Any other questions on Casell Connect? Further questions about attorneys, we can add to another agenda, but.
We will have a training.
Perfect.
We will just.
I'm excited, just click on anything blue, got it.
I have teachers all the time, so maybe we'll get. House, different levels are available, online, but it's still.
Thank you. Any, any other questions for Katie, specifically about Casell Connect?
With Casell, is it just gonna be us that, look at it, obviously the public can't, okay?
Great. Okay, let's move on to resolution R twenty twenty-five dash twenty, the Kingston Terrace refinements, which was recommended by the commission.
I will also try to make this, I will also try to make this as brief as possible. I instructed the council to review this resolution after a workshop, a work session, a load meeting, a discussion. I drafted this resolution with help of the planning commission, uh, because due to some developments that have been approved by necessity, I was considering one of the four options for, uh, if you're a park master plan, to identify exact location where parks will be standing. Or other code amendments that might require developments to say, to devote a percentage of their, their land to park space to help facilitate pocket parks. Still working through with the best options for that, but all this resolution does is authorize staff to explore that. And any code amendments or processes for park master plans down the line will be seen at the planning commission, heard by the council, ultimately decided upon by the council. So, it's still a work in progress, but this is the first step to begin that work.
Thank you.
As well as, uh, options for more affordable housing.
Yeah, I think this is an important step to make sure that our land doesn't get all developed before we have the parks. So, I appreciated the, the public comment too, and, I mean, it's a good thing to nail down. I think that's why we're, um, committed to the transportation system plan too, because things are happening. So, we really do need to make sure we've got all of our ducks in a row, so. Um, I'll open it up to any questions before we motion to approve.
Um, hey, Max, um, do developers or the city have to comply with park development requirements?
So, currently, this city does not really have requirements in the community development code for parks. So, if a developer wants to come in and not build a park, as large as a smack dab on an area that is located in the master plan, that is the only area within the confines of where the comp plan identifies park space. Let's say a develop, it only happens all around a specific area and that specific area in the comp plan. Let's say a develop, if only happens all around a specific area, and that specific area in the comp plan has park space designated to it, there's no other way that you can move it anywhere else, um, then we could potentially require that, say, start building parks. But right now, we don't have any provisions to require developers to build parks. Building parks in the master plan is more or less illustrated as a city initiative. I have more to say about that in my staff report as well.
We can use the park SDC funds for, if you had to.
If they were willing sellers and productive, you know, even if a developer did want to come in, they would bring proposals to the city. They would buy the land and say, hey, we want to build this park, and then we would work with the developer, potentially going open house like that with public to make sure that's what the city actually wants and pursue.
Do you feel like now is a good time to add your part of the report in here, just so we have all that info, or is that too?
Certainly, yeah, so.
Can I, I just wanted to ask a question about the resolution itself, because often it's to allow staff to keep funding and develop resources for the development of affordable housing. How is that going to work, and how much money are we devoting, and how much do you think they'll need to spend here? Does that go to be part of your report too?
Uh, I don't have that in my report, but I haven't moved as much, well, frankly, since this resolution has been passed, I've gotten exploratory information seeking, but I haven't actually worked on anything too comprehensive, because I haven't got so, other than suggestions by the planning mission. Um, I've talked to the L T D, and they, that pointed me in the right direction for a couple of different grant programs to, um, like, affordable housing organizations within the state that could provide technical assistance for code amendments. But pretty much as far as I've gotten from that portion.
So this resolution probably solves parks and affordable housing, is that, am I reading that correctly?
It authorized the staff to look into amendments to, or code amendments to pursue those things. Yeah, and so, scientifically, scientifically enough, I have a property owner in Kingston Terrace who has been in conversation with some developers, and his property is located, the Harold property, um, and his property is located right near where the Kingston Terrace Town Center and where the Charlotte Woods Development are. There, there's a little wedge between the two of them on the very southeast corner. It's a really very pretty property, it's very forested, it's got great views of the river, um, and he wants to build a park on his property. And so I was discussing with him, and I'm actually going to go back to that developer tomorrow and see if I can have a meeting with them to get the ball rolling on this, because maybe within the next few years, we could purchase that land, or the developer could purchase that land, and we could provide them with SDC credits. And so the developer that currently is interested in that land is the new home company, is building the Kingston Terrace Town Center. So we're not receiving SDC revenue from the town center at the current moment, because all the SDC, the park SDC revenue is going into an escrow account, because the developer is building a park in the town center. But any SDCs that are left over after that park will go to the city, and there might be a way to negotiate with that developer to just put the rest of the SDCs into another escrow account and negotiate with them to build the park. Also, that might save the city some money on that. Have a concept that is, I can't really share, it's not publicly available, but, um, it is starting to get the ball rolling. He actually seemed pretty excited about promising his birthday, so I think he wants him to move and, and live, live, uh, the rest of his long life somewhere traveling or something, so that was just something that I, a conversation that I had today with specifically about building a park.
Great, that's awesome.
To devote SDC, and we currently have 560,000 dollars in our park SDC account. 560,000.
Um, at this point, let's go ahead and make a motion to approve, and then we can further discussion, is that fine? Somebody like to make?
Um. I missed you, approve Resolution R dash 2025 dash 20, Kingston Terrace refinements, is that the right one?
Yep.
Oh, sorry, I'll say.
Perfect. Okay, we'll go to discussion, Councilor Gerhart.
Well, I have a comment really more than anything else, and that's, and you're working with the planning commission on this, weren't you?
I worked on the planning commission with the resolution, yeah, we, we had numerous conversations about it, so.
And I think it's important to note that, uh, October 29th, they voted six to zero to recommend approval of this.
Yeah, yeah, probably should have mentioned that, but yeah, they voted six to zero to recommend, uh, after, after a very solid conversation.
Yeah. That's all.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. Um, how is affordable housing defined?
It could be defined as currently the really only mechanism that the city has to incentivize developers to build affordable housing, such as like smaller houses, cottage lots, or townhomes, middle housing, things of that nature. Our SDCs, our SDCs are based off of floor space in a house. So if you build a smaller house, build more of them, you're paying less SDC per lot, so that's kind of the incentive. But I know there's mechanisms out there to buy for, uh, you know, it could be supplemental housing to give incentives for, um, other, I think I haven't attended the technical.
Okay, I, I just want to follow up then, affordable housing is more of a square foot rather than a price?
Right.
Right, they're charging for a square foot, so it's smaller, it's just less money. You know, the houses over there are expensive.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't necessarily call them affordable, but I just want to make sure at another cost.
That's why they want to, if we can put it in our code to incentivize developers to build smaller houses, yeah, if it's possible. The planning commission is also addressed, uh, you know, they're looking for more single story houses to accommodate, you know, smaller residents that we have in proper, folks who don't want upstairs, or don't have their kids living at home anymore and stuff like that. So there's ways to kind of manipulate that to allow incentives.
Okay, and then the resolution calls for the development of the Kingston Terrace master, parks master plan?
Either the development of a master plan or code amendment.
It, well, I just wanted to check with our finance, uh, I heard that you definitely have that plan, could be expensive?
Yes.
Do we have the funds?
Probably not, not as where our primary focus is on the P S C.
Okay, so this is more of a, a vision?
I think in the short term, code amendments that would just require development to build parks, even if it's smaller parks, is kind of the, the way to go in the meantime, and so the city is able to allocate funds for their park's master plan. But parks are addressed in the Kingston Terrace master plan, but as Mr. Meyer pointed out, it's broad, and there's a lot of room for wiggle room, and so developers can say, well, well, you know, I don't want to build my park because you can move it somewhere else, so that's why it's on, oh, this is on the city to, to kind of prioritize doing these park SDCs, which actually do expire after 10 years, um, to start building parks.
So code amendments could, I don't know, force developers to not?
My, my, to avoid park, building a park, yeah, my, my thought was, and I, I still have to talk to Metro about this, how it can do but, there's other cities do it a little bit differently, but example would be, say, you think, there has to be a certain threshold, so you want to have, if it's a pocket park, at least it has to be like a half acre or a square. Um, and require that there's active recreation on a playground, a tennis court, or, you know, whatever. And so if we put those provisions in there and give, like, just some examples of what they can include, say, choose three of the following active recreation examples, and build a park on at least 3% of your land. And the land that you build beyond the 3% threshold, you'll be able to get SDC credits for. Or if you build land that would be devoted to a future neighborhood park or a future community park, then, you know, say you build a corner of a community park, that would then fulfill that code requirement. So it's, it's ways to sort of nudge developers into building.
Uh, that 3% again, I heard out in the past, 3% of the acreage?
It's depending on the size of the lot, of the lots that they're building, I just pull 3% out, but.
Okay.
I think it's like, I can't do the math off the top of my head, but like, you have an acre, an acre? So Kensington Square was 7.19 acres, and I don't know if it was 3% or 5%, something like that. Probably way off, somebody can bring out your calculator, but.
850 square feet if it's 5%.
Of 7.9 acres.
Oh, 7.9, I am here, I have even less.
7.9, 20,000 square feet. So, I don't know, it's probably way higher than that, but anyway, so there's ways to do it. And I have to explore the rest of this resolution that's giving me the.
Well, that, that's fine, thank you, if you have explanation.
Kind of what I was thinking, that was barring the code amendments, is just requiring a specific percentage of your development, if your development is more than five acres, which most of the lots in Kingston Terrace are, um, more profitable, build developments over multiple lots, so I know many developments larger than that.
I have one last con, just a comment, you know, I've always supported the parks, we need to have them, it makes the community more livable. Um, and this probably after future discussions, but as we consider building more parks, we need to budget how we're going to maintain them.
That's correct, yes. Currently, our maintenance is, we have this on contract at the King City, uh, community parks. So if we build more parks, we'd have to increase the contract, and I'm not sure exactly what the contract is, but want to try to build larger, smaller amounts of larger parks as opposed to larger amounts of smaller parks. So that's one of the risks of requiring developers to build pocket parks, if you have 15, 20 pocket parks, then you have 10, 15 trips to those pocket parks for maintenance. Um, so that's why there's got to be kind of ways to sort of edge them towards where the parks are located in the master plan. And I think if we have it as a code requirement already, say, hey, just do this, tell them where we want this one to go, and we can say this will satisfy the code requirement, where right now there is a code requirement.
So would you be able to, um, who will manage to make sure the parks are put in places that are optimal? Because I heard one of the people say, that a lot of these parks are marginalized, and this is a really affect conducive, and keeps the spray. And it would be nice if we could also mandate that.
They have to put an actual restroom, you know, those porta potties, if that's something that's been added, I don't know, but that would be nice.
That is a question, a good question, I'm not sure if I have exactly a good answer for you right now.
So that one aspect concerning, if we, if we adopt this, it's great that we have this going, but I don't know who's managing it, I don't know how planned, I don't know how it's going to happen.
If there was plan, that would be probably more part of if there was a development of a park master plan, because you have to do geological studies and, you know, everything like that. It depends on the photography, how much they can, you know, build and stuff like that. Problem that.
Council Cunningham?
Thank you, are any of these, um, uh, I'm sorry, are any of these areas that we're building right now, Kensington Square, Charlin Place, Kingston Terrace, going to be HOAs? And can the HOA be required to take care of the park?
That would depend on if the park is owned by the HOA or dedications, which could be negotiated development through development agreement, but, for example, there's a lot of parks in the city that aren't elements of public. And so the question, um, do we want public parks, or do we want a bunch of private HOA parks?
The, the side part of that is the K C C A parks are probably not used by anybody else, including the K C C A.
Yeah, or used by all of them.
Just a question.
Council Diddy, do you have anything you want to ask?
I'm the parks expert of all of you, let's just vote, okay? You're an hour over schedule right now, let's get it on.
Motion on the floor is to approve Resolution.
Max is saying it's not wrong, but there's a whole lot of things here you don't understand. If you want to ask somebody about it, give me a jingle, all right?
Would you like to add your comments here before we vote?
No, we're an hour over schedule, and we keep talking about the same things, let's vote.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve Resolution, Resolution R 2025-20, Kingston Terrace refinements. Council Gerhart.
Yes.
Council Cunningham.
Yes.
Council Tysoe.
Yes.
Council, Council President Braverman.
Yes.
Council Olson.
Yes.
Councilard Diddy.
Yes.
Mayor Kaczynski, yes, motion passes. Uh, moving on to Police Chief's report.
Ten employees tonight, uh, first off, I did a quick little fact checking on the whole, and wrong mixed opinion. Parking of the RVs and stuff that are getting somewhat. Example would be if Steve has his truck and trailer parked out in front of his house. That's 48 hours. Here, advice may over his house, and I bring my truck and trailer, 72 hours to be, so it's, it is, we need to clean it.
I guess, yeah, how would you know if it's the owners or not? Because how would you know if it's the owner?
We have to run plenty, we have to run plenty.
Right, yeah.
No, no, I did explain that to. Why I just walked outside with him. Um, and just a quick, uh, kind of overview of, uh, last, fascinating, police department, traffic stops last month, 19 welfare checks, 11 custodial arrests, uh, maybe one from a rollover crash, I believe it happened at Funky Bend, close to 116th here. And, uh, we've been kind of picking up the pace a little bit on the abandoned vehicles, uh, six of those that have been under review, and then basically what happens, we've got to check that we need to also fix our abandoned vehicle code. It is somewhat antiquated, um, it is, it prolongs the process, it's very, takes a long time to fill a car when there are some other policies from other cities that are on, but we haven't. Um, so that's it for, what I have there, any questions on that? I think we'll go into my, as a tour, which, again, I, I like to just pick up the staff and all the work that they've been doing, it's been incredible, um, I wish you guys could be here during the day to see all the work that they do, uh, from over at the counter with all the passports and everything that's coming in, and with, uh, what, Ronnie, Max, and Mary and Katie are doing, and Erin, what, what she's doing for us has been incredible, and it's a testament to, um, letting employees do what they need to do, and, uh, you know, not getting in their way and looking over their shoulders. So we appreciate the direction that's been provided, and they're taking off and doing that really well. Uh, the only other thing I've been looking at besides the HR stuff was, did do a bigger, a little more dive into the sidewalk program, you know, we're going to discuss that next month, a little more in depth as far as what we can do. And, uh, again, it's been all, we're talking a lot about money to pay, it's all about money, and so I have some ideas.
Whoever runs with that project on sidewalks will be the hero.
Yes, and we're also working, uh, where Ronnie's got a new deal called Rover that works on finding holes in streets.
Okay.
See, we're trying to get that done, we look for sidewalks as well, but it's, it's lacking a little, lagging a little bit behind in the technology, but hopefully we can, we can get out there.
And we have, when we talk about the cyclops, are we going to find any of the people that are most concerned about cyclops, K C C A?
We most certainly can.
Have you included any of those people in your research?
Not yet.
Okay.
All I've been doing is looking at, uh, policies from other cities.
Okay.
And how they, how they have.
If you need the names of the contacts of those people, I'd be glad to provide them, thank you.
Do you have any update on the lease space?
Lease space department, you know, nothing has been drawn in there yet, we're, we're actually thinking about, about potentially offering some sort of a bigger first month or something like that, just to tie somebody in there, but, uh, as of now, no.
Okay, um, Key Code was in here today, do we?
They were, um, they were pulled wire up to my, yeah.
Oh, sorry, oh, sorry. No, 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 not you.
Yeah, they, yeah, that's, that's what they're doing, they're, they're upstairs.
I actually did have, going back to, if I can, Police Chief, um, Derek, uh, Sergeant Aragoni talked about a scam seminar. Has that happened yet, or has that been scheduled?
Great question, I believe that it has not happened yet.
All right, that's, sorry, that is all I had. All right, that's, sorry, that is all I have. Any other questions for... All right, we're gonna, we're gonna take a very quick recess so that, for a restroom break. Very quick. No more than five minutes.
Thank you.
That's short.
It's hard on those ladies, you know?
No, I hear ya.
There, and you're at warning. Hopefully, you're not...
I started beginning in two thousand twenty-four when the Kensington Square development came to the city. And we were working on the West Side Trail. One part of that was we needed Washington County to consent to annex, uh, one thirty-seventh. And at the time, they didn't really, they weren't super available to that. And there was some negotiations going back and forth between Peter Watts and the attorneys and traffic engineers and R and D here at the county. And what I did not realize was never brought to my mind was that actually county consented to annexation, sending a letter over to the city dated from May twenty-five. And recently the county came to me and said, hey, we sent this, we sent this letter over like seven months ago. And you approved the development, uh, what's going on with this road. And that was new to me. And so, and I also have, uh, consent to annex from the PDA power lines. One thing I do want to mention is that annexation does not equate development. But breaking in land of the city, it would be beneficial for a number of reasons. Having the PDA power lines don't change taxes. I don't know if they're taxing them, but it does create, can take conjugality to, um, one thirty-seventh. And having one thirty-seventh in the city will allow us to begin improvement. And also it's the first step in potentially fixing the intersection of one thirty-seventh and Collier. So I'm just reading this as informational to the council. So it's on your, now in the back of your mind, uh, the process for annexation has to go through a PAPA. There have city hearings and everything like that. Um, but this is just something that I have, you know, this kind of imperative for me to work on as the planner. Uh, we can dive more into that at the next meeting. Um, and I already talked about the parks, and, uh, that's all, everything in order.
Can I ask you one quick question? Is the PDA tower lines, do they have full tower lines or do they have just half of them?
They just have half of them. The other half are in the city.
Or, or are you...
Yeah.
Okay.
But not all own sides of the city.
She do.
There are them around the city. Portions of them are, there are them more or less are owned by the Edgewater HOA. And a third portion of them are owned by the Mountain View State property owner.
Okay.
So they're on the east side. And then the west side, where the wooden pylons are, are PDA land that is currently non-incorporated in Washington. So there's a few projects that, you know, West Side Trail being the obvious one, but also the kayak launch, which has proven public support because we did a bunch of outreach and we wanted to have a kayak launch as maybe a festival. But part, part of that would be the power line. And it would actually involve improving the parking down in the parks, things of that nature. And so I think having that power line corridor annexed in the city, again, doesn't equate with development, but it does help the city kind of move forward on some of these maybe smaller projects that are less controversial.
But even if the power lines are annexed by Edgewater, it's still Edgewater's land, so you can't trust that.
Edgewater land is already within the city.
Yeah.
So, just how, people are, it's all over the whole area. So any, any other questions on that?
Um, all right, a couple things on my list. Um, happy to announce that the city hall will be an internet purchase exchange location. Um, so what that means is, uh, if you are making a purchase, uh, you know, credit or something like that, and you need a place to meet, you can come to city hall. We have our dispatch phone that'll be right here. We'll have a big, nice big sign that advertises it. Say you're selling your car and you want somewhere safe to be, um, you can come to city hall. We have cameras, that phone, et cetera. Um, so we will be advertising that very shortly. Um, additionally, the community talk newsletter, like I've mentioned that I am revamping it. And I will be, uh, reaching out to counselors because I would love to have your input. And I would love for you all to have a section of the community talk newsletter to be able to, what do you think you would like to work on and really reach out to the community in that capacity? Um, and then, uh, I was informed that, uh, Council President Braverman, uh, you're having an event at US Bank, I believe, on elderly scams and, and literally... That's on December fifth at eleven forty-five. Um, so I'm sure you and I will work on that to get some more information, make sure people know to attend that. Um, that's my, Michelle Timpson. She's the French manager of USA. Yes. Uh, so, but I would love to make sure that people have that information ahead of that, um, that they can attend. Um, and then, so the, my final is the USA survey. Um, so as of right now, we have a hundred and thirty-nine responses. Uh, when I first presented it to you, it was a hundred and sixteen. So, um, we got lots of good responses. Um, I spoke with a bunch of the folks, um, just one-on-one and it clearly to also get some additional input there. Um, we got really strong response out of the Highlands. Um, I did submit additional ones to KCCA. I didn't receive any back. Um, I'm still trying to work on that aspect. But, um, some of those highlights is still traffic, rough concerns, uh, speeding in a lot of, in select areas. Um, there are still a lot of concerns about council, council relationships and dysfunction. Um, and then obviously abandoned cars and the council transparency. Um, at this juncture, it'd probably be my advice that we move forward for all of you to review this content so that you can start making a strategic plan moving forward for next year. I think we're kind of at a point where the input has still. But I think there's plenty that you guys can work on, um, and start to build that strategic plan that you talked about from this input. Um, but I'm happy to email that Excel sheet over to all of you so you can really start looking. And if you would like to do a workshop or anything like that, I would be happy to attend and kind of walk through those answers and what I received as well. So, um, that's everything I have.
I have a couple of questions. Um, how many did you get, uh, of the survey from Highlands? Do you remember? Any idea?
Um, I think they were the, like, twenty to twenty-four from the Highlands. So they were a majority of those, uh, answers.
Like, within the last month?
Yes, within the last month. I reached out personally to everyone at the Highlands. Ronnie reached out to everyone at the Highlands. Um, so that's where we received our strongest additional response.
I mentioned it at their meeting also.
Right.
Um, your newsletter, kind of, how often?
Um, I'm aiming for quarterly. I think that that kind of gives us enough space to be able to, for me, uh, to be able to write it and create a quality newsletter, um, with quality content. If I did it monthly, it would be my entire job last position I held was just to write a newsletter a month. So quarterly is probably what I could handle.
It'll have like a calendar of events as well, too?
Yeah, I'm aiming for a calendar event. I'm aiming for space for a police chief report, for city manager report, for counselors. Uh, just, uh, just an ability for our community to know what's going out there, less of the officials and the, that we're transparent and that they know what's going on without always having to attend these events as well.
About advertising space for companies in King City?
Not both, yes. It's a, it's, I, like, I can make it as big or as small as we want to. Um, so there's, like, the advertise, I'm trying with...
KCCA has a pretty good one they put up. Your question.
Thank you for trying to get the KCCA people to respond. I don't know why they don't. Uh, anyway, I wonder if, if, I'm not sure if this is your lane, but if you go to the city website and you go to the city manager page, it still has Mike Weston's picture and all his contact information. Could we change...
I don't think that I've taken that.
Can we change that, please?
Yes, we can, yes.
Because they all want to contact the chief. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me know. Yes.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you so much for doing such a great job. Not only on the survey, but I noticed the Facebook postings. We had a recap of our last meeting. I thought it was excellent. And so for getting the word out and helping us spread what we're doing, you're doing a marvelous job. And I, I can't thank you enough.
Um, I just also wanted to talk to you about the newsletter. Would it be helpful, I mean, I don't know what you're envisioning, but maybe at the next meeting or so, um, you could give us a layout of what you're thinking? And then we could definitely figure out how we could help support that because you're doing a great job. You shouldn't be doing that by yourself.
Yeah, I would have, I, I would love to show you a couple of different layout ideas that I have. So I will make sure to bring those to the next meeting. But thank you.
Sorry, I have one more thing that I had to go over that, uh, is proven because of time. So there's a public, P D, uh, planning commission hearing scheduled on December tenth. For the local weapons, which they will vote to recommend that it'll come to the city council for approval. And I can give you more of a brief next month after the planning commission hearing and explain. I have a presentation made and it's very detailed, so you can expect that at the next city council meeting.
I didn't, I didn't hear what you said. What is it?
It's a local weapons inventory.
Okay, sorry. I didn't hear you.
For regulatory purposes.
And we've got to have the meetings too, Ken.
By all means, I would love for you to attend. Just make sure you don't have a war. And I think that was Ronnie's turn.
Uh, real quickly, uh, I'm trying to spill my thunder. Um, so, uh, Key Code has started over. They pulled a bunch of wires today. Uh, Friday they will finish up the project, um, and we should have really quick audio for Counselor Ardidi to hear us, uh, and the public. Um, and then, uh, the other thing is finance. P C and I are...
There was, did you have an update on the post office?
So, uh, a while back ago, we sent a letter to, uh, Congress. Our senators, uh, about trying to get, uh, post office... I believe the next step is I'm just calling them, stalking them for a little bit. Because, uh, because I haven't heard anything from the letter. I haven't gotten an email or call or kind of letters saying...
Confirmation of receipt?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nothing. So, um, we are going to, well, I'm going to basically be calling them.
Is that a state representative that you were talking about?
Uh...
Congress congressional?
On the top of my, uh, special. Two senators and me, this, yeah, it's, 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 it would be, it's an act of Congress, basically.
They were just chatting down for a longer...
That's all I have for right now.
Um, were you, are you going through the building department report and engineer staff memo? Or did we, did we already do that?
Oh, we did that last month.
It's list, it's listed here. Did we already look at that?
I don't know. No, I don't have the report.
Well, it's in, it's in here, like, the one, like, the permits issue. Is it just like, okay, here it is, and we've looked at it?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. I already looked at it, so we don't need to pull over it just for...
Great.
Love it. All right, Counselor Gerhart.
Yes. So on, uh, the twenty-second of October, I attended the Highlands, uh, HOA meeting. And I, I figured there'd be ten, twelve people there maybe. And there were like seventy people there. I, I was, I was absolutely amazed. And it's a very, very professional, well-run meet. It's, it's, uh, they have problems with microphones, just like, uh, they do over at KCCA. Um, and I don't find... with microphones, just like they do over at K C C A. And I don't, I think they're going to hire someone to fix that. They're very concerned about Fisher Road going through to Rogers. Not apparently concerned enough to come to the city council meeting. I talked to the Ron, the gentleman who's the H O A president, and invited them all here.
Rob?
Rob. Yes, thank you. And I just, and I, so I'm going to talk to him about additional meetings. He was, he was, we've been emailing back and forth. He was very grateful that I showed up at the meeting. Everybody was. And I took questions, probably about a half hour's worth of questions from people, which surprised me that there were 17, 18 questions. And I think that's why Rob had a bit of a concern. But gee, we really appreciate you being here, but can we make this a regular thing starting in January? Because I don't think they're going to have a meeting in December to make the decided one this year, this month. So I told him that I would go to the meeting starting in January and then we'll go on a regular basis. I'm the alternate and Jessica is the primary on that. So maybe we can trade back and forth or something. And a guy named Mike Dahlstrom corrected me. I called it the Bangston Nature Preserve. It's really the Bangston Conservation Preserve. And he made quite a big point of that in a rather loud voice and later apologized vehemently and then later emailed me and apologized again. And I didn't, I didn't see the problems at all. I didn't, you know, it wasn't a big deal. Oh, a couple of people said, can't we get rid of center median on 131st? They say that that has created such a hazard, especially during school hours. And you just can't see past all those pretty bushes and trees. And so there, I think, I think we need to put that on our to-do list.
It's on the December agenda.
There you go. I'll let them know. Maybe that'll stimulate them to come to it. And they also would like more officers of the law on 131st. You guys?
Yes.
Simply because of all the kids and hazards. In fact, one guy was telling me after the meeting, he said that he was doing 28 miles an hour, 25 miles speed zone there. He got a ticket. He went to court and tried to talk to the judge out of him paying him. He said, no, you're going to pay it three miles over the speed line. So they're serious. Let's see, I've got done here. Then last week, I listened to the planning commission meeting, our planning commission meeting of, it was last Wednesday. So I listened to the whole thing. And I was alarmed at the tone of the voice that lies active. That's it.
Counselor Cunningham. I'm really quick. I attended two K C C A meetings, but not in any official capacity, just as a member of K C C A. And people want to talk to me about, you know, they know, now they know that I'm a counselor. And so they want to talk to me about things. They don't want to come to the meetings, but they want to talk to me about things. I also attended a work session for a day where we were stuffing, stuffing R S F. And during that time, I got to talk to the K C C A president, and she would like to be on the panel for interviewing the city manager, with the condition that she could see a job description. And I said, that'd be great.
They're going to back it.
And their concerns were speeding and traffic. I mean, you keep hearing, it's like, you keep hearing the same things over and over. The speeding on King George, the speeding on Royalty Parkway, Prince Albert is the cutoff. And tomorrow is my first J-PAC meeting. Ronnie hooked me up. I'm a listener, not a member. That's it for me.
I'm not calling your name.
I don't want it to. I'm going to be washing my hair.
Thank you.
That's it. Sure. I have lots of pages and I'm not going to bother to do it. On October 29th, I did the municipal fundamentals training from L O C, which was a halfway training. Lots of good information. So then I also attended by Zoom the, on October 30th, the Housing Infrastructure Financing Program. And I'm not sure that the King City would, what am I trying to say, would be eligible for any of it because it, they offer construction loans for people that are at 120%. Their income has to be 120% or less of average medium income. And it's pretty low. I forgot what the number is. But, but if there's any interest in it, I do have contact information apps. And the Washington County Community Duck Grant Policy Advisory Board meeting was canceled for November. So I have nothing to say about that. And I drove out to, the next day I drove out to the Metro Mixer, which was in Gresham. I got there too late for the presentation because it took me an hour to get there. But it was, you know, I got to meet the mayor and a few other people. And then. Jessica and Rachel and I did the strategic planning workshop and ended up in the same little breakout work group. And I stole the line from Jessica because we had to do the full exercise where, where we were basically trying to do, you know, the, the sort of the model.
Vision statement.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. And so Jessica, in earlier conversation had said, King City, where you're, where you live your best life. And then I, and then we were supposed to expand on whatever our opening statement was. And so I had added a community that fosters human connections and understanding businesses, outdoor spaces for all. And so it was, I think we learned a lot. I'm done.
I need a vision statement, not only based on that seminar that we went to, the three of us, but that's what I've been kind of saying. And I've been kind of told that I need to be patient. But I want to show you that what, this was reinforced in the seminar I went to in how we should be doing our planning. We just did a public survey. So that's the starting point where we have some priorities and directives that we should be getting from the public. Councilors have mentioned tonight that we can avoid a lot of the tendencies if we just listen to our people. Well, we should be listening to our people, which should then come down to the next strategy, strategic planning. And I think the city council should be getting a workshop. I know it's planned, but in my view, we're already down into the action steps. And we've put our action steps before we've actually put our plan together. And that's been a concern of mine, and I think concern of others. We need to really put our vision and goals, our imperatives, our must-haves, and then what steps we want to take to get to our vision, goals, and plans. And right now, we've kind of gone to action steps where P S P V L seems to be one of our main priorities. But the council has not yet decided where do we want to allocate our funds. And as I already seen today, we're running out of funds. So we really need to kind of go back, I feel, and get our groundwork laid, which is what I've been trying to get, and I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just very concerned that we are putting some things before other things. And I'm afraid that we're going to make a mess of it. So I just made this little chart, seeing if we could maybe schedule a work session, you know, that the mayor is planning on this. But I'm just thinking, maybe we should have that sooner. And if we can spend a whole day on December 3rd interviewing candidates, I don't know why we can't spend a whole day in the city council working together because we do work well together. We do have different approaches and we do have different talents. But the three of us, when we were at the seminar, I felt the three of us were working very well together. We all kind of had the same, not only kind of outlook, but we all realized we had different talents, whereas the mayor was really good at the action steps and felt that Jan and I were really good at putting the big picture together. So I think, I'd like to get counsel's input on this, but this is kind of my report. I think we really need to decide what, you know, what we're hearing is the G S P and then the sidewalks, street prepared and safety, street safety, walking, lighting, removing the median. We're talking about our municipal code and charter. We're rewriting what we must have in the city manager, the contracts with the city manager, our sound system.
I'm hearing city manager.
We really should bring that up to the public to make sure, you know, if the public like any of our strategic plan, I mean, not only would it be a full circle and everybody would be included, including itself.
Okay, Lincoln.
I'll just add a, kind of a brief statement. I'm trying to organize my thoughts, but I can get it down. You know, previously, it was stated that a Fisher Road extension would relieve traffic on both Deep Van Road and 131st. And remove that traffic as cut through traffic through Edgewater. Tonight, we heard members of the community from Low Highlands and K C C A, they echoed these concerns about cut through traffic, safety. These are community-wide concerns and generally recognize it. Increasing cut through traffic reduces safety, the character and livability of the community and property. All I got to say.
Councilor Ardeni?
I'll be attending the interviews in person on the 3rd. I've contacted Karen White, who's the senior escrow officer at Fidelity National Title about the new homes that are being built in the new development. And I've already toured two of those homes. I've met with Wes Montgomery and I'm going to apply for a ride along with him. And that's about it.
Awesome. We'll be happy to see you in person.
You'll see me for that, not for every meeting, okay?
I got you. We heard you. All right. I'm going to keep my report. I didn't miss anybody, right? Okay. I'm going to keep my report short. I have more that I'll probably just add next month. But I did obviously attend the strategic planning with Councilor Taiso and Council President Braverman. And I do agree, we worked really well together. We had very similar, we had several different breakout sessions with different prompts for each. And it was good to see that we had very similar first visuals for what we want the community to look like. And then the reasonings for why we wanted our community to look that way. And so I think that we are very much on the right track to strategic planning. We have gone through the steps of pulling the community and really finding out, you know, what everybody wants. And, and so, yep, a strategic plan will be very useful. And I think that we'll, we'll do a really great job working together doing that. So I also watched the planning commission, commission meeting from start to finish. And I echo Councilor Gearhart's sentiment that I was also quite shocked with how it ended. And I don't know where to go with that, but I, I didn't appreciate that for you.
Is it the city manager's responsibility to handle the staff?
It was a member, it was a member of the community.
The committee is formed by the mayor. The mayor appoints.
No, it was the chair.
It's up to you, Rachel. You have the power to send shit. You have the power.
I understand that. I think that, well, I, yes, I, I was not prepared to do that at this meeting, but I did want to make it clear that I was not.
We met the next, so Friday.
In, and I, yeah, and I will. I just think in, we have talked a lot about respectful workplace environment, and that has been a very big deal for the last year. And I've been on the receiving end of like not great situations. And so I just want Ronnie to know that, you know, it was seen and I don't appreciate the way that it happened. So, I wanted that on the record. Okay. That is all that I know. So I make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, aye.